Are we ready over there? Excellent. Okay, so this is meeting of the planning board on Thursday, May 28th, 2015. I do not know which meeting of the year it is, but we're three away from the end of the fiscal year. I'm just going to run through our meeting agenda for today. We have approval of past minutes from April 23rd. Our next meeting dates will be June 11th, July 25th, and July 9th. We have citizens speak, new business acceptance of the master plan, public hearing at 6:45 for a special permit, site plan approval, scenic road, 865 Brush Hill Road, 7 o'clock special permit, Thayer Nursery, which is continued from May 14th, 7:30 PM site plan approval for 333 Brush Hill Road, also continued from May 14th, old business process forum and discussion of zoning articles for the October 25 town, 2015 town meeting. And finally, we are being broadcast and taped. Excellent. And I'll have the members introduce myself. My name is Emily Ennis. I'm the chair.
Cheryl Taggias, member.
Tim Sarwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Alex Whiteside, I'm a member.
So let us start with the approval of the past minutes.
I actually don't think, have you seen those minutes before I sent them out just the other day?
Not before you sent them out, no.
Okay, so I don't know if these are ready for approval yet.
Okay.
April 9th will be ready for approval, next meeting, and hopefully April 23rd also.
Okay.
And hopefully you'll also have some more minutes.
All right, so then we'll hold them till the next meeting?
I'm working on them.
We had a lot of meetings at once.
Yeah.
With the town meeting as well. All right. Citizens speak. So, does anybody here wish to speak on any matter before the board other than the special permit and site plan hearings that are happening later today? If not, we'll move on to the next item, which is, Tim, actually, why don't you give us your update? Formal update.
I didn't have anything prepared. I've been doing a lot of work on sort of organizing the process for analyzing some of these special permits. I did some work on the, wasn't really, wasn't counting on talking, so. Updating the matrix that we started to use for the Thayer Nursery public hearing last week. I started one for the Woodmere, 865 Brush Hill Road special permit. Didn't get through all of it, so you've only got what I've been able to do a technical review on. And yeah, we, I spent a lot of time doing a technical review of an upcoming site plan approval, so hopefully that'll bear fruit in terms of getting a nice, complete application before the board. And that's, that's all I've got. I've been the staff support person for the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, so I've been doing a lot of work there. I actually just came from a site visit up at the Old Town Dump, which is, it's a piece of land up there, so I've been doing a lot of work with that. And as a bet, I'm looking forward to the summer and doing some, some public outreach, which we'll get to later on in the agenda.
Okay. Actually, we could probably move ahead to that old business item. So this is the process forum discussion of zoning articles for the October 2015 town meeting. We've got about seven minutes or so till our first public hearing starts, so why don't we talk a little bit about this? You should have received a proposed schedule, and the thing that we absolutely do need to confirm tonight is the date of the June public workshop, because June is rapidly approaching. So, I started with my calendar, and I am free the 22nd, 24th, 29th, and 30th for a public workshop. This would be an initial, we talked about it a little bit last week, but just to remind everybody, this would be an initial kickoff discussion of the zoning articles. We'll be doing something called a visual preference survey, which is what we, where we test people's preferences for different types of things. In this particular case, we're going to test what they like or dislike on signage. We'll be looking at density with respect to the two different types of condo developments that we're looking at. And Cheryl and I just had a quick discussion before the meeting about looking at accessory units and testing whether people, if we want to change that bylaw, whether people would want them in houses, attached to houses, in separate dwellings, all again depending on densities and location and types of houses. So that's one thing we'll be doing. We'll also be asking, we'll probably do a handout survey, and I'm going to be talking to Tim about doing an online survey, so people who aren't able to attend would be able to participate. So, we're not presenting the zoning yet. What we're doing is presenting the ideas around the zoning, and that will help us get to a point where we can present the draft zoning to them in July. I'm looking right now at the second week of July, but I am open to that. So does anybody have a preference on dates? So we do not have a lot of capacity for the type of facilitated discussions that we did during the master plan, so it's basically, it'll be a presentation. The visual preference survey is something that you hand out, and people will circle and hand back, and we'll be handing out other questionnaires, and probably have some boards up that people can move between to see information. So, well, it'd be great to have all five of us there, plus planning staff. I do understand it's the summer, so we'll go for the date that we can get the most, and I'll obviously check with Brian. So Cheryl, I see you looking at your calendar. Do you have any favorites on those?
No, those dates work for me, so that's good.
And Alex, have you had a chance to check your calendars?
I don't have a calendar.
Okay, great, so.
Presently, I'm fine.
Okay. So, Alex, when you get a chance, drop me an email and let me know.
No, any of those dates are probably fine.
Okay, great. So I'll check with Brian, and I'll pick one of them. So, we had talked at the last meeting about people starting their research. As you can see, I've been working on the structure of the event. Cheryl, you've been doing research on the accessory dwelling units and inclusionary zoning?
Right.
Reading through that, so gathering that. Alex, have you had a chance to get in touch with any of the people from the condo? It's only been two weeks, so have you had a chance to talk to anybody who is interested in the condo?
Well, the working group should be meeting next week.
Great.
But we have to wait and see if Brian is willing to do it.
Okay.
Because he's a co-chair.
Okay.
And if we do, I have, I have some ideas. It seems to me, what I'm thinking right now is that we should use the neighborhood associations as a entry point to the greater states, greater states condominium zoning, and that means that the neighborhood, the neighborhood associations would vet applications and give the thumbs down by vote on what they weren't willing to bring forward. And that, it seems to me, that if we, we work around with that a little bit, I think that in the double A district, we're going to, I'm going to suggest that we have a maximum density of no more than two, which is half of what was used down at St. Pius. And then, I, I have some good ideas here, and I think that, I think that, I think that they may find some favor, so I'm looking forward to the June meeting to see if, to see if they do or not.
Excellent. And are there, we'll do the, and I'll talk to you about what types of visuals we want to show people for the visual preference survey, but are there other things that you want to test? Are there questions that you'd like to put on a survey?
Doing the noise for Curry.
Oh, that's right, you are as well.
It seems to me that we might have people make some noise and then, you know, determine, determine what is acceptable and what is not.
We might want to consider a slightly more scientific method, but, you know, that's, that's actually a really interesting idea. I wonder if we can do a vocal survey? So, okay. So then, and Mike, you're our check on all of this. So when we start going off in the wrong direction, you say, wait a second.
Work with me on noise.
That'd be great.
I'll make some noise.
And Alex, you're also doing the non-conforming dimensions of residential buildings.
Right, and I'm hoping that Ned, oh, there he is, that Ned engages on this with me.
Okay.
Because we're looking for a solid, non-conforming business bylaw, and.
That's Brian. You're doing the dimensions of residential buildings, the ones that.
Solid dimensions of residential buildings, what you can expand with or without a special permit.
Okay. I think there's some diagrams we could probably do for that as well, that would make it easier for people to understand at June, this is, especially.
Hear that diagram.
Diagrams and photos of buildings around town that are non-conforming.
That would be extremely helpful. Maybe think of two boards that we could post up with information, and then some sort of survey questions that we could.
Sorry, I was out of the room, but you're thinking about doing this?
This is end of June. We're looking currently June 22nd, 24th, 29th, or 30th, somewhere around in that date. We just have to confirm the date. So we'll be talking more about it at our next meeting, but I will be in touch separately with each person to discuss what we'd need. So, so that would be it. It'd be a presentation, the visual preference survey, another handout survey, and probably some boards scattered around the rooms. We can use probably either Fuller or Cunningham for this first one. They've both been great during the master plan process. And that, I think, brings us precisely to 6:45, yes?
See, I can assist people with things.
Excellent.
Visualizations, research, whatever, just give me, give me some lead time, and I'll, I can do whatever.
And we're going to be counting on you to help out with the public outreach as well.
Yeah.
Question, Emily. The draft language is to be drafted by the individuals?
With Tim's help, but yes.
With Tim's help, okay. And then, I presume that somewhere in here will be built-in town council review of that language?
Yes, yeah. Probably after the July meeting and going into the August.
Okay.
So, all right, 6:45. So, I'm going to run us through the public hearing process again. We'll be doing this at the beginning of every public hearing that we do, as we did last meeting. So this is a public hearing on 865 Brushwood, also known as Windmere. It is a special permit, site plan approval, and scenic road public hearing. We're going to have a presentation from the applicant, a report from our assistant planner on the technical review. We'll then go into questions from board members, and then we'll take testimony from members of the public, and I'll go through the rules for that testimony at the time. And then we will identify the outstanding items for the next meeting. I would expect that this would probably be continued to June 11th, so we'll see how far we go.
Isn't Windmere the 333 Brush Hill Road?
Sorry, Woodmere. Woodmere. No, it's 865.
Woodmere? Nope.
I wrote it, I didn't write it down on here. I was two letters off. Woodmere at 865 Brush Hill.
Okay, and that's what we're doing third?
That's what we're doing right now.
Oh, I thought we were doing Brushwood.
No, Brushwood's at 7:30.
Oh.
At least that's what I had.
Okay, all right, okay. I understand now. Thanks.
No problem. Ned, I'm going to turn it over to you for the presentation.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask the team if you'd come up and sit at the table. For the record, Madam Chair, my name is Ned Corcoran. I'm an attorney based in Quincy. I am here on behalf of Northland Residential, which is the developer of the property at 865 Brush Hill Road here in Milton. You recall that we went through a fairly extensive process with the board a year ago, leading to town meeting in October and the successful passage of a bylaw to allow the redevelopment of that property. We're pleased to be back. I'm joined by Jack Dolly, who is the principal of Northland Residential, and has spent a lot of time with you, Alan Ockerman, who is the landscape architect with Ryan Associates, Deborah Keller, who's the site and civil engineer with Mackenzie Engineering, and Jim Valeco from Grizzato Valeco Architects. He is the project architect. And I think that you have met each of them at least once or twice in prior meetings. So I'm going to do a quick overview of sort of the site, the development scheme, present as much as I can sort of visually, and then turn it to the board for questions. So the site is about eight and a half acres, fronting on Brush Hill Road. This is Brush Hill Road on the bottom of the, of the plan. About 405 feet of linear frontage, which exceeds the bylaw requirement for frontage on Brush Hill Road. It is directly across the street from a substantial portion of the Curry College campus. It rear lot line is about 900 feet, and it, its rear abut is the City of Boston Housing Authority Fairmount Project, which houses about 202 units of mixed housing to the rear. The property is a side yard along Dana Avenue. There are two dwellings, two properties that abut on Dana, and Cushing Road side, there are one, two, three, four properties that abut on Cushing, with a fifth property that's on the corner. There's one that abuts, another one here. The property is mostly a trapezoidal-shaped lot containing just under 370,000 square feet, with a separate, what we call a hockey stick or a tail, which extends out to Cushing Road with about 9,700 square feet, so the total combination's about 373,000 square feet of property. The bylaw authorizes the development of four units per whole acre, provided that if we achieve two specific conditions in the bylaw, were adopted as friendly amendments at town meeting, that we would be able to develop four and a half units per acre. And those two conditions are that an existing historic dwelling, the DuPee House, which housed, which originally a manor, then for years housed the rectory for the St. Pius 10th Church, that that be redeveloped, and second, that the setbacks for the front yard and side yard exceed the minimums that were provided in the bylaw. The minimum front yard setback is 60 feet. I think we achieved 61 feet and change, and the side yard setbacks, the minimums are 35 feet, and we achieved 37 feet. So based on that, the application is for the full 36 units that would be allowed under the zoning. The plan calls for two units, we call them mansion units, in the DuPee House itself. They are flats, one over the other. There's an old, and I'll show you more specifically in a moment, photographs of the existing conditions of the DuPee House. But there's an old wing on the sort of westerly end that's proposed to be removed and replaced with side-by-side garages, two, two-car parking garages on each, but preserving the main portion of the house for development. There is a spectacular, somewhat overgrown now, but terraced lawn area that will be redeveloped and will be made part of the open land for the property, but it's a beautiful condition of the site. In addition to the two mansion units are 34 townhouse units in two and three dwelling pods. One, three, five, six, seven, 12, 13, and 14 are two-unit pods. The remaining are three-unit pods. The, and we'll show again renderings, but these three units in particular are designed so that the wall, that the side facing Brush Hill Road is given a front door appearance. The driveway entrances to the side, there is a main entrance with a, sort of a covered porch with a main front door. You actually enter the unit from the front, and as required under the bylaw, at the request of neighbors, that we would achieve that. We met during the process for the application, for preparing the zoning, we met many, a number of times with abutters, neighborhood association, this board, and others. We've met with, several times with the town staff, engineering, planning staff to review and plan all of the site and civil pieces of the design. We met recently, again, with neighbors to sort of present to them what we had, and discuss with them what we have presented, and so we prepared to, there were minimal comments, but we are prepared to respond if necessary to those. One of the conditions, requirements of the, of the bylaw is that we achieve at least 30% open space on the property. And that open space had to be, there's a very specific definition for that open space. It couldn't include narrow strips of land, couldn't include land that was, that was only available to one building or another. So, we achieve 2.77 acres, approximately 32.3% of this site is open space. It's all achieved by treatment of the exterior boundary of the property, treatment of the hockey stick itself, this area, walking path through to all of this. This will house some of our detention base and stormwater management. It's a relatively flat site with some areas where there's some dips, so the engineering for site, for stormwater management was fairly significant, and there's fairly significant detail on the package as to what's, what's proposed, how it's to be installed, how it would be managed, and whatnot. But really, it's designed to treat the appearance of the, of the property from all four sides, and I'll get into that a little bit more in detail. In fact, these are some photographs that depict how we would treat the property. It's interesting, on this side of the property, in particular along the Mary Jo Hughes property, Josie Hughes' property, there is a sort of a, a stone wall along here that would maintain that wall. There's nothing really between the Cushing Road properties and the property, and there's an old chain link fence that's, that's between the Moses property, which is the second house on Dana, and the property. And we propose to replace that and to install sort of a low timber fence, so that there is a physical barrier, but it is not a wall that would then have to be treated separately to mask the appearance of the wall. There's a significant distance generally between the abutting dwellings, with the exception of this one, but between, there's 30 feet here, that's really, so that would make almost 70 feet between the house and this building, but we would treat that, and that is sort of a, a physical barrier, but then would be more specifically treated with plantings as such. There are some significant trees, character-defining trees, as Jack likes to call them, including a large beech. It's located here on the property. We've had to work the site drive around it to preserve, there are other trees located, significant trees located, and to the extent possible, all of those, most of those will be saved. And a lot of the sort of invasive dense brush that exists out on the property today, it's really become overgrown. Most of that will be removed, it'll be cleaned up in front. There was a request, for example, at the neighbor meeting last week, that some old, that some beautiful white rhododendrons that are in the front of the DuPee House might be relocated to the area in front, behind the stone wall that exists along the front. And so I think that's something that we think we can easily do. So the area, all of the exterior area will be treated substantially in this way. There was a separate request, we have not yet responded completely to, and that is, we are, the water is bringing, brought in from Brush Hill Road, will loop the property through the main site drive and connect back, but will loop out through the hockey stick and tie to Cushing. It'll be a significant improvement to the town's water system as a result. One of the things we will need to do in that regard is to maintain some sort of access, maintain some sort of access to that water pipe, in case there was blockage or something. But we've proposed initially a gravel walking path that would meander as you, as you come in from Cushing, that would sort of meander, it would look like it would disappear in the trees, and there's a request, if we can even eliminate that. We're kind of open to that. I think at one point someone asked us to plant poison ivy as something that would deter, but we'll need, we may have to have some sort of ability to access that water main, but with that, that is a request that we're, we're looking at responding to, and we're open to, to suggestions that the board might have with respect to that. Of significance is how does the front door really want to present itself to the community? And this is a rendering of how the wall will be. There's an existing stone wall that runs, it's substantially the length of the frontage of Brush Hill Road. There's currently a 17-foot wide opening for a, a paved, not good condition, but a paved driveway that goes back into the DuPee House. We're proposing, in section 1.3 of the application, is a scenic road application to adjust that wall by cutting it open to 22 feet, really to address necessary width of roadway and to, for emergency and other large vehicles, to have safe drive capacity for folks entering and exiting at the same time, and to provide safe access for fire apparatus. We met with Chief Grant specifically with respect to that as part of our meeting process, and that was an important consideration to the chief. And so the presentation is that the road, the wall would be simply cut and then wrapped back into the property, substantially the way it does now, with a, with a stone cap on either end. Says Woodmere on the stone. There's a 865 rendering here, and then two lanterns marking the opening. They are two of five lights that are proposed for the property, other than lights that would be specifically placed by doorways on each of the units. So these two lights, I guess at about four feet, and there are three posted lights. I think there's a detail in the, on page, sheet number eight, I think it is, of the, that shows a, a light standard with about, I think, eight feet plus a two-foot similar We have, we are cognizant of the notion that this development needs to be dark sky compliant, and so those lights have caps pointed down, and all of the, the, any lights that would be attached to each of the dwellings would be maintained in a similar fashion. There was a request from neighbors that we do a couple of things with respect to this opening, this treatment. Right now, we're showing a sidewalk that comes out from the plan, sidewalk that comes out in the roadway. And there's a cobble band that crosses here that alerts drivers exiting that this is time to stop. We're not proposing a stop sign. Doesn't keep, not in character with the appearance of the rest, but we do need something that would alert that. One of the requests is that we eliminate the sidewalk from that point coming out. There are apparently, there are no other sidewalks on Brush Hill Road. It's a sidewalk that wouldn't lead, doesn't lead to a sidewalk, and so we're open to the notion of modifying that based on comments either from the board or from town folks. And so, that is one, is a thought that we would potentially sort of place a cobble at grade, sort of, some sort of a cobble or a brick, probably not brick because of the appearance. at grade, some sort of a cobble or a brick, probably not brick because of the, there is no brick in the project, but a cobble walkway that would be at grade. It wouldn't appear as a sidewalk. We need something that will protect the surface for vehicles coming out so that they don't climb over a curb or rut. So, that needs to be a hardscape feature. Perhaps could be, instead of a vertical curb, could be a beveled type of curb. So, it's a detail that is being considered. But, as you can see, the idea is maintaining signature trees, trees that have been there, and infilling with evergreen and other bushes and trees along the front so that the development sits behind. You can see in, but you'll glance in, and you'll see this house here, this is building That's almost a hundred and twenty feet back. Similarly, with the green treatment here, you'll catch a glimpse of each of these front doors, but you really won't, they won't be completely visible. With respect to the Dupee House, this is the sort of existing conditions. It's a stucco with some shingle on top. Bones are solid. The exterior condition has been damaged through vandalism and disrepair. There is a large hole in front where during the sale process, it was discovered that there were some underground storage tanks, and there was some oil, heating oil, in those. That has been removed and cleaned. Jack took that on as part of the obligation under the purchase and sale, and has cooperated, obviously, with M S T E P in the requirements as to how to go about doing that. So, that hole is there, obviously be filled and replaced. This is a sort of a point, line of demarcation. You can see that the building steps back a couple of feet, and this was, this is the wing that is proposed to be removed. It housed kitchen and servants quarters, there's small rooms, dimly lit, small windows. It's a much different treatment as to this main part of the house, as you enter here. There's a beautiful open room with a staircase that goes upstairs. It's really quite spectacular. So, the idea is to remove that and replace that with the garages. So, I think we showed this last year as a before and an after, and would be replaced with, this again, slightly larger, the same, the front. And then the front elevation, that's it. Well, this is an elevation as you, yeah, that's that same elevation here. This is a beautiful existing element that is difficult to see in this photograph here, those columns. That'll be restored. The garages will be placed on that right-hand side, and the facade, the exterior will be restored. In the rear, should I get it? So, this is the, I guess this would be the first floor, floor plan. Two garages, one garage coming in here serving the first floor, second garage coming in, separate entry to the garage, serving up to the second floor. And then, this is this spectacular garden terrace. A portion of it would be made private, so it's a private outdoor area for each of the unit owners. But then, this area made part of the broader open space as a gathering location, and just a handsome element to the project. Jim, these are...
So, that would be the perspective from Zuringen and that first house to see the different materials that we're anticipating.
So, this is one of these, the houses that face out. You can see how the driveway comes in here, that there's a front, there's a walk that comes to a covered area with a front door. This is the front door of the house. Looking at two different materials, because there's stucco on the mansion, Jim's proposing for a number of the units, ten to fifteen, maybe twenty percent of the units, that there be a stucco first-floor treatment with shingle or clabbered above. And for others, a different look, this with clabbered than shingle. There was some discussion with the neighbors a week ago that too much stucco might not necessarily go with the neighborhood. There are other homes in the neighborhood where there is stucco, but there are others that aren't. And so, it's sort of a blend of those two elements. Yes, one last thing that I would present. I think a couple of interesting perspectives. These are details, if you were looking in different places. So, section D is actually a profile. If you were standing on Brush Hill Road, looking this way, what do you see? Well, you see this home on the corner, you see this home, the next one in. There will be this sort of little low-level fence, there's existing large trees infilled with other green vegetation. And there's the first building. This is property line, thirty-five feet in, and then building nine, here. So, excuse me, so this, building eleven, here. This perspective looks through this lot, which is a long lot. It is, I think it's two hundred feet almost from, it's over a hundred feet from the rear of this house to the property line. So, again, that existing home, long backyard, the low fence, infill with vegetation, and then building nine. The typical detail shows a low-level split rail fence, as described, with new flowering trees and shrubs at lower levels, and then just new trees where necessary to fill in Similarly, if you're standing on Brush Hill Road and you're looking, first of all, if you're standing on Brush Hill Road and you're looking this way, section A would show the house owned by Josie and Rick Franklin in to a sort of a low stone wall. It's not a, it's not a, it is not...
Mortared.
Mortared, it's just a...
Stuck, stuck, loose, over farm wall, inside wall.
And so, that runs substantially the length of their property line. And it would propose to infill both sides of the wall. It's thirty-five feet to the rear setback, to the side yard setback, excuse me, and then to building number two. And then, two views, sort of standing here, looking into the property at this. So, section B, Brush Hill Road, sixty-foot setback with existing large trees, infill of other vegetation, and other existing and/or proposed vegetation being put in, and that is building number twelve. So, that's fairly way, this is the, this is the circular drive here. And then C would be looking to the first dwellings, Brush Hill Road, the sixty-five-foot setback with existing vegetation and additional vegetation proposed, and new building number one there. So, interesting perspectives as to how. So, two other comments, I guess, to address. One deals with affordability and location of affordability. There are four affordable units. The bylaw requires ten percent. We in fact get to eleven percent, but, and the proposal is that they be placed in buildings five and six, which are to the rear of the property, proximate to the bus and housing authority. They are a little smaller than other units and need to fit in that more constrained area, but each has, each is an end cap. There are two units to each of the buildings. So, they're not in the middle. They have substantial amount of side and rear yard available to them for private area. And so, we think work for a number, number of reasons as to why that would be appropriate So, at the end of the day, I think that the project has a significant number of benefits. First is the restoration and conversion of the Dupee House itself, which was an important consideration for the historical commission, I think, in town meeting, certainly this board. Provision of new housing stock, these are new units, they are first-floor masters, they are designed for active adult empty nester without children. Likelihood is that if there are children, they are likely to be, you know, high school, graduating high school, graduating college, but not there for the long term. And looking to meet a demand for such housing among folks who are either living in town, looking to downsize, or moving into town because of their children, grandchildren now living in town. Preservation and restoration of the scenic wall along the front of Brush Hill Road, provision of dedicated open land and protective buffers between the development and abutting properties is shown. And finally, net new tax revenue of approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the town, resulting in creation of these new units without introducing additional children to the town's public schools. It's a significant economic win to the town. And with that, open to the board for questions and comment. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. We're going to hear from Tim first. Tim, you've been reviewing this application. Any immediate concerns? Have you deemed it complete?
So, we, before the meeting even got posted, we had a chance, make sure this is pointed as close to me as I can get it. You know, I had a memo that I sent to Ned and Jack. I didn't bring it down with me, but they addressed all the concerns that I laid out in my initial review. What I did was, and what I've been trying, and what we'll try to do for all these special permit applications, is to create a matrix like this, break out the bylaw that enables the project into bite-sized sort of chunks that need to be complied with. And so, I feel like whatever my technical review is kind of baked into this, into this compliance column. So, things that are quantifiable, that I can, you know, very easily look at and say, setbacks are what the setbacks are, the frontages are what the frontages. I've tried to make a note of. Things that are more of judgment calls or beyond my personal expertise, I've left to the board. So, this is, I've gone through up to, after that initial review, which Bill and myself deem the application to be complete and ready to come before the board, dug a little deeper here, and I got up to section ten of the application, which is parking. A lot of things I found to be compliant, there are just a few things that I think are worth bringing up. In section three point one, plan unit tennis development may be established, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, exclusive of wetlands. The application says there's no wetlands on the site. I've seen it, I've seen the plans, I'm apt to believe it. I don't know how you can prove a negative, but I tried to go through the engineer report and see, you know, what sort of analysis or survey or whatever was done to verify that. So, the engineers here, that's just something, just a quick comment on that. Into section four, requiring the condominium association, the application does have a draft of a master deed and condo documents, bylaws, et cetera. The zoning bylaw that we have calls for a view of condo docs by town council. So, I gave them a quick look. They seem okay to me as condo docs go, but that's obviously something we're going to want to have town council take a look at, especially relating to the things that are in the bylaw. So, one of these, one of these instances that I sort of need to depend on your collective judgment and discretion, section eight, under buildable pods, definition of a buildable pod is a building containing not more than three townhouse units, and which contains exclusive use areas suitable for the provision of parking and yard for each townhouse unit. The parking and the pods, I found to be compliant. What defines a suitable yard? What defines a suitable yard? So, that's just something to keep an eye on. Ned brought up something that I had brought up in our initial technical review about the citing of the affordable housing. The application does include a draft, LIP, local action unit application. Oh, boy.
Yeah.
Pulling out a chair in the back, everything looks to be okay. I'm going to do the camera's point that way. So, there is, there is a draft of an application that will eventually have to be sent to DHCD to get these affordable units onto the subsized housing inventory. So, that's in there. The citing, there's, I think Ned's arguments are valid. DHCD may have their own opinions about where on the site the affordable units need to be. I don't know if we can predict what their temperature is on that, but that's just something that, you know, and I've expressed that to the applicant about just keeping an eye on that and being ready for that. So, otherwise, up until that section, a lot of the things, the setbacks are fine, the heights seem to be in order. So, as you're going through, you can see I've noted a lot of compliance. So, so far, so good.
Great, thank you very much. I'm going to open it up to questions and comments from board members. Anything?
I have...
I saw your hand go up first.
Okay. I have several, or a number of them. Should I start and just work my way through them, or did you want to have discussion about them along the way?
Depends on what they are.
Okay.
Let's see what you bring up to start with, and then we'll see what other people have to offer.
Well, first of all, I'm very happy to see the retention of the historic house and the historic gardens. So, I'm quite pleased to see that. I am concerned, though, about the, when I looked at the site plan, the proposed grading and drainage plan, and then I... and drainage plan, and then I, when I read the narrative, I, I really only see the possibility of a couple of existing trees that are remaining, because I see a line of clear cut, and it looks to me really like everything in the center is going to be clear cut, with the exception of the beech tree and the historic landscape. I tried to overlay the survey, which mapped out the existing trees onto the proposed grading and drainage plan, and it, it really does look like a couple, perhaps, on the southernly The Williams House in that buffer zone, there might be a couple that can be retained, and the beech tree. So, it looks to me like there's a fair amount of fill being done, or a lot of earth moving. So, when I'm looking at existing grading and this grading plan, and then when I was looking at the roadway plan and profile, we don't have a calculation of fill. I'm wondering if we can get a calculation of fill, and if also if we could get some comment about how much clear cutting and impact on the existing trees. And then, along that same line is the number of parking spaces at over four per unit, which is over two visitors per unit. It provides a lot more pavement, and I'm wondering if we could have a comment about why that number is deemed necessary, because if we had less parking, we'd have more green The retaining wall itself is called out to be a block, where I saw in our bylaw that that's required to be stone. I couldn't find the proposed locations of the light fixtures on the site plan, on the layout plan. I'd like to see cut sheets of the light fixtures with photometrics. And then, the, the proposed fence along the, the property line with the Housing Authority, I see in the details it's proposed to be nine feet in height, and you didn't comment on that, Ned, so if you could comment on that a bit. And then, what that landscape buffer is like. So, are our neighbors looking at, you know, basically a wood fence, a metal fence, or what are, what are we presenting ourselves to the Boston Housing Authority site? I did also, as Tim pointed out, wondered about the location of the congregating of the affordable units. Typically, I'm accustomed to seeing those dispersed throughout, and also of comparable size, so I'm not, again, I'm not sure how that's going to be viewed. And I think that's it for now.
That's a good start. Do you want to take them all at once, or do you want to hear from other board, you know, do you want to do Cheryl and then hear from other board members, or do you want to hear from everybody at once and then answer everything at once?
I think it might be easier to answer as we go.
Okay. Then you are recognized.
And I will, I will start, and I'll ask others to step in. So, with respect to earth movement and preservation of trees, I'll ask Alan and Deb to respond more specifically to that, to the site civil characteristics and whatnot.
You can ask the cut and fill, you probably have a closer sense of that than I do.
It is, it most likely will be more of a fill as, as stated. We haven't done the actual calculations, but we can provide, definitely provide that.
And there is a fill bylaw that says if you move too much fill, you've got to go to the Board of Appeal, so the calculation is important.
Also, there's, in the bylaw itself, it talks about in, under site plan design standards, the existing terrain shall be preserved in so far as reasonably possible, and the same about existing trees. So, just take a look at that again in terms of the response, I think.
In terms of existing trees, you're right, the primary preservation happens around the perimeter of the property, with the addition of the beech, which we've highlighted. And then, between building 13 and 14, kind of as they form that, that L, that upper end of the, of the green commons, or the, the space in the middle there is where we're preserving existing trees. Beyond that, that green space in the middle is a, is an open area where we have existing roadway, driveway that snakes back through the opening to the front side of the Dupree House. So, we have some openings in the property already. But you're right, the primary preservation occurs around the perimeter and then adjacent to the beech tree.
Because also, if you look at the grading and drainage plan, it shows the, the stormwater system, which I believe is pretty much to the left of the entrance drive, so that rendering would show existing trees. Are they going to be able to be retained there?
Yeah, so, the dark green here shows which area was bounded and used to, to show the, the open space calculation. The other rendering probably does a better job at showing where existing vegetation is protected.
So, I guess I'm wondering, when looking at sheet five on the civil, with that work that's required for the stormwater, whether the trees that are shown in the rendering are actually going to be able to survive, or if they're south of that, closer to Brush Hill Road. So, those trees, right, Ned, flip it around if you will. The other side, there you go. So, those darker trunk trees, I'm presuming are existing trees?
Yes.
So, I'm, I guess that I'm asking.
They are basically between the stone wall, as you say, and the start of the infiltration system.
So, there was a slight clearing in that area, but we, we would be having to take a few trees out for that, but they seem to be spaced so that we would be able to maintain several of the trees closer to the stone wall and be able to supplement them.
I guess I would ask that maybe you could confirm that the trees, you think, can survive this kind of construction so close to them with retaining walls, like the beech tree would have retaining walls, these new stone walls, this, the new, the new work that's pretty extensive in terms of grading, I think. My experience has been that it's hard to, it's very hard on the trees, especially depending upon their canopy, because we, I don't know how accurate this canopy is, my, I suspect it's actually a bigger canopy than this. And then, the, the existing survey doesn't show the trees near the entrance drive at all. It doesn't show trees of significant size here on the existing conditions plan. So, I guess if they are there, it would be, and they are intended to be preserved, it would be good to mark, because the drawing only marks the beaches being the one preserved, as far as I've read.
Correct.
I think the issue with respect to parking, intent was to provide adequate number of parking spaces for the project. There are two, two parking spaces in each garage, so each unit has, has an attached two-car garage. Gives you 72 parking spaces off the bat. There is a driveway in to those garages, and the deep, the garages are far enough offset from the roadway where you can park additionally to, side by side in the driveway. So, that gets you to double 72, 144. There are six other spaces, so drop, drop-in spaces. There are two that are directly across from them, right proximate to the entry, the intersection of the roadway in and the start of the loop road, that's directly across from a mailbox, there's a small common mail area. Post office won't go in and deliver it to all of the units, they'll just come in and deliver into the, into the common mailbox. And that will, that small building will also house mechanicals, particularly with respect to access to the irrigation system that will operate through the property. So, directly across from that, there are two parking spaces. There are also two parking spaces, one, two on the halfway down the right and two on the left. Buildings that they are located between, but they're shown actually between building 12 and, building two and building three, and then between building 10 and building 11.
Yeah, also five and six.
And also five and six, right.
So, eight.
Total of eight.
So, are those, are those spaces that are being provided to achieve zoning requirements, or are they for, that are needed? I mean, are people going to use them, or, you know, with the expectation we, people will park on the road in front of the building, the people, they're visiting?
For guests.
Correct, for guests.
I think the expectation is that if you're coming, that they're cited such that they would be reasonably convenient to at least some of the buildings for guest parking. More likely that you'll park in front of the roadway. The bylaw is, is, isn't specific with respect to the number of spaces required, it's just an adequacy standard. Really providing a substantially greater number of spaces than most other projects that have been developed, more with recent bylaw amendments.
I think you're hearing that, I think you're hearing at least some, at least from me, and I think from Cheryl, that we're questioning whether they're, they're really needed.
There's one of my concerns as well.
If they're, if they're only being put there because they, you think that we're going to require them for zoning, I would, I would question, I'm questioning the applicant, do you want them, I guess is my question.
Having done a few of these kind of projects, I can say there's, we're always asked to add parking, once they're built.
By the, by the residents.
By residents. I'm happy to take them out, but invariably, someone will ask to put it back.
If you think you need them, and I think that's what we wanted to hear, is whether you need them, do you need them?
We, we find ourselves tucking them in in pairs after the fact more often than taking them out.
Yep.
Be honest with you. The issue with parking on the street is, they will park on the street, and then, we're proposing, Ned didn't say it, but we're proposing that the main entry road be 22 feet wide, and that the circular loop road be 20 feet wide, as opposed to the subdivision road standard is 26. So, you start lining up cars along the road, and if they're not tight to the curb, so we don't want to encourage too much road parking.
I think I just, my, my concern was that you're putting them there because you thought this board wanted them, and if that's not the case, then I'm, my concern is not there.
And I'd certainly rather have them in groups of two than a, a parking field.
Yeah, we, you know, at the most, we have stretched it to three, otherwise, you know, they're 20 feet deep, they're 10 feet wide, they get big.
The retaining wall, lock versus stone, is the next question.
Right, that occurs at the, to preserve the beach, where the road makes the turn there. And aesthetically, we prefer stone, field stone, mortared. Looking at the foundation requirements and how invasive that will need to, you know, penetrate native soils and versus.
The root structure.
And the root structure, we're going to have to compromise it and, you know, do some root pruning in advance of any site work. But the capability of the modular units and geotextile tiebacks behind the wall can really lessen the, our foundation needs and the ultimate impact to the tree. So, that's why we were specing a modular unit block wall there.
Said differently, we didn't want to excavate the root structure and pour a one-foot-thick by 24-inch-wide rebar in, you know, laden footing to then build a masonry wall on top of it, as opposed to laying down crushed stone, and then, as, as Alan said, using the filter fabric tiebacks that then would run back underneath the road as it comes around as, if you will, their tiebacks. We felt was less impactful on the root ball, on the existing root structure of that tree, as, as Ms. Tagaya said, you know, that, uh, we have a fair amount of experience with this up at McLean Hospital, where we did, you know, root feeding and so on and so forth to try to preserve trees of this nature. So, we deliberately, I guess, went away from the zoning requirement of that, that mortar wall, in this case, probably without thinking, to be honest with you, well, thinking for the other reason, motivated by a different reason, yeah.
So, we'll just have to list that in the waivers that you're requesting.
Right.
I think of the light fixtures first.
Yeah, light fixtures, the only detail we have currently is shown on Construction Plan Number Eight, three, there are three of those 10-foot tall light fixtures with 24-inch bulb, how, how they are located. I know I had to go find them once myself. One, next, proximate to the.
Mail station.
Mail station.
Sheet are you on? Ned?
What's that?
Which sheet are you on?
If you look at sheet four.
Four, okay.
Come in to the mail station, that is, there's a sidewalk that crosses the road, right, the, the circular road, there's a light fixture just to the left of the sidewalk.
Yep.
There's a light fixture in front of building number four.
Uh huh.
And there's a light fixture.
I need a magnifying glass.
I know. And this side's planned, they're tough to see.
At the intersection.
And there's a light fixture at the intersection of road B and C. And those are the only three proposed interior to the site. There are two, as I showed before, on the end caps of the, the new, the wall as it comes in along, in, off of Brush Hill Road. And then, they don't show, but there will be lights on the front and rear doors of each of the, of the units. And so, the board would like further detail with respect to that, I'm sure we can, we can provide that.
And task number one for me next week is to put these electronic documents up on the town's website for the public and for the board to be able to zoom in on those.
Do you, do we have full scale on the landscape? It's, they're not legible, the plant material?
I noticed that.
Schedules are illegible?
We did submit several copies of full-size plans, but we submitted.
I can run up.
I was going to say for next week, or next meeting, maybe we have this one set.
Plans we're proposing, you probably won't be able to correlate that easily to the map.
But we can at least do the list, that'd be great.
You can see the list, would you like that?
Sure, yeah.
Can you do that? Yep, yep, just for document, yep.
And did you still want the cut sheets on the light fixtures?
Uh, I think so, yeah.
Additional detail, okay. I'm, I'm keeping a list.
And the photometrics.
Right. Okay.
And now, the fence along the property line with the Housing Authority and the buffer.
Right.
Well, we can, just on lighting, on the streetlights, you know, we can certainly do more, I don't think we can do less. Our problem with streetlights is everyone wants streetlights, but no one wants them at their house. So, it, in front of their house, because they're, even though they're downward casting, they, they, they frown, right? So, you know, three is probably a little light inside the circle, although, you know, the garage, there'll be, there'll be a lantern on each garage, or lantern, there'll be some sort of lan, lamp on.
Carriage lamp.
Carriage lamp, thank you, on each garage, and we have those hardwired, so they're on, they come on dawn dusk. Again, downward casting, but so that there's, you know, the woodlands, what we did was recessed lights in the soffit, overhang, garage door soffit overhang, and they just basically illuminated in, what, a fan or triangle, cone, thank you. And provided just enough, you know, sort of ambient light so that you, it didn't feel like you were going from dark zone to dark, light zone to dark zone to light.
So, that will allow me to reflect on the photometric, right? Are you going to be able to incorporate those features on that?
We can, um, we haven't really got to.
We'll try to, usually the manufacturers of those little kinds of lights don't get that scientific, or still do.
Okay.
I think it is, as Jack is saying, it probably lights up the 10 feet around the garage, still being another 10 feet from the street, but there's a general light level, ambient light and probably good wood, we'll, we'll try to figure that out. I would suspect the computer's going to call it a zero, though, even though I know we've driven around and probably know there's light there, but it doesn't read.
And it's those lights that aid in house identification and streetlight, or street number visibility.
Yeah.
Right.
So, the, the back wall, the existing condition is an eight-foot chain-link fence that was installed by the Housing Authority, probably when the house, you know, when the neighborhood was built. It's in variable condition, there's vegetation that's grown up through it, there are gaps in the fence, but, you know, deliberately opened or widened over time as people want them cut through. And so, the, the fence itself. them cut through, and so the fence itself is in, is there, it's not something that Northland, you know, has control over. And I don't think you've spoken with anybody from Boston about doing, you know, anything about it. So what we would be doing, or what we're proposing with the, with the solid fence, at least as high, nine foot, would be to provide a solid fence that would be along the property line in addition to the trees that are saved, in addition to the plant, new planting along that edge, and in choosing a solid fence, composite material that wouldn't be subject to the same sorts of decay and maintenance requirements, as some other options would, or be as visible as another chain link, it would provide an edge to this neighborhood and an edge to the housing authority as well, regardless of what they might do over time with their chain link fence.
So would there be distance between their chain link and this fence, or are they on top of one another?
Not much, no.
They're off the property line a little bit, we'd be off the property line a little bit.
So, we're proposing to mirror their fence with a new solid fence, through which, you know, and then, on, if you will, the development side, to plant, retain what we can retain, and then augment it with an understory of vegeta, you know, planting to effectively hide the fence from our units that are rebutting it, or facing it. We were not proposing to, for the sake of discussion, have their fence in a six, eight, 10-foot gap, then our fence, and then, and then some sort of landscaping, it was sort of, they mirrored it, and they were as, as close as was feasible, I guess, to put it in. I imagine there'll be some sort of gap between the two, so that if you had to run down through it and repair something, you could get there.
We've also, at the neighbor meeting last week, we have a request to extend that fence all the way out to Dana Avenue, along the rebutting property line.
And is that fence the same distance from your property line as the wall on the one side and the split rail fence on the other, that you're proposing? So you've got, one of your edges is Brush Hill Road, one is Cushing, one is the other side, so you've got the stone wall on one side, you've got the rail fence, and you've got the fence in the back, are they all the same distance from your property line, roughly?
We've shown that roughly now, not knowing the location of every tree and whether-
Right, exactly.
And every danger.
But if you were to draw a line all the way around, you'd be-
It's effectively at the property line.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not going to cut down a tree that's big for one, for a fence. The fence on the Cushing roadside is, is really only proposed because the backyards of the Cushing Road lots and this property just, they just blend together. So if you went out there now, you can't, you have no understanding, and, you know, in many cases, you know, there's lawn at or to or beyond the line, you know, just the nature of maintenance over the years. And so we're trying to create some sort of visual, sort of sense of one side versus the other side of the property line.
Right.
It's more or less there on the Dana Ave side with the rubble wall, remnants of the chain link fence that kind of comes down from the Boston City Zoo line, behind the first house there. Along the rear is to try to create as dense and opaque a view through to Boston as we can.
And then I think the next one is the location of the affordable units, I was also a little surprised, because I have the same understanding, is that they tend to prefer them-
I, I can take that one, because I'm into my fourth project before this one, working with both 40B and several local initiative, local action initiatives, where I have, and this is all in the last five years, where we have worked with both municipalities, DHCD and Mass Housing, in the design, location, and dispersment of units. So, I put them there based upon that experience. In our current 40B project in Duxbury, we have these exact same units, which are order of magnitude 13 to 1600 square feet, depending upon if they're a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom, with a two-car garage, so that they are visually similar in scale and massing to the other units from the street. We have those same plans that Jim designed with our product there, the market rate product is 23-
23 to 25.
23 to 25, 23 to 24, and Mass Housing in that project, it's a 40-unit project, so there's 10, 10 affordable units, two of which were restorations of existing single-family dwellings, eight new ones, and we have two dup, there's a duplex plan, nothing but duplexes, so we have four of the eight to be built in duplex, we actually have six of the eight to be built in duplexes. Two of those duplexes are right next to each other, one is around the corner, the other one is somewhere else in the corner, and we proposed them and they were, they were approved. We, too, did not expect that, so that's our most recent experience, and that's current, that's in the last 10 months. If I go up to our project in Burlington, which was a local initiative program, not a 40B, we worked with the Belmont, Burlington Affordable Housing Committee, we had 10 to disperse, and we had triplexes there. In one case, we, we have triplexes and fourplexes, in one case, we, the two middle units of a fourplex are the two affordable, are two of the 10 affordable units, in another case, it's a middle unit of a triplex, in another case, it's a 10-unit building, and there were two or three in that apartment. That was Belmont, Burlington, and then DHCD, who had to essentially approve the subsidized, SSI-
Subsidized adding inventory.
Process. So, in, when we were developing the plan, and looking at where to disperse them, we did that with, with our experience in mind, and our belief that, that we will be able to prevail, if you will, in where we want to put them, what the design is. These two locations have a somewhat interesting feature that none of the market rate locations have, is, if you studied the grading, you'll see that those two buildings have, are walkouts.
I could see that.
And they're the only two walkouts in the community, so we can finish the basement as part of that offer and bring 13, so first floor footprint is 1,000 square feet, 1,025, finished basement, probably add around 700 square feet, after mechanical rooms and so on and so forth, so the square footage of that can get up into, quite easily, and if it were of your liking, I'll commit to that, so that they would be up in the 21, 22 to 2100 square feet. We haven't developed a floor plan for the basement as yet, but I'm sure we can do it.
Would it just be a bedroom, wouldn't it, for the kids?
Well, we're limited on how many bedrooms we can have, as you recall, Alex, and we can have 93.6 bedrooms.
Would be called a den.
So, right now, I am proposing to have, in our arithmetic, here's my piece of paper here, 15 two-bedrooms and 21 three-bedrooms, one of the three, the 21st three-bedroom is one of the affordable units, because if you do the math, it's 93.6, around, you can only have 93 bedrooms, and so then you start playing with it, and I ended up with one spare, so I put it in the affordable unit, so that, so that they were comparable, if you will. And then, I guess the, the other notion is, is you don't want to have too, too many bedrooms in the affordable units, because you may not get, you may attract what you don't want to get.
Any other, yes, I was going to ask any other questions from the board, because I'm watching the clock.
Can I just come back with two more?
Of course.
And this is, just to be quick, on the fence itself, could we get cut sheet or section through it, just with a little more detail, the dimensions and materials called out, and-
For the, for the rear fence.
For the nine-foot fence, right. And then, on the fill, it'd be great if you could do the calculation and show it, but could you just give us the, your strategy for why you're raising everything up? I noticed the floor elevations are all raised up too, so if you could just go over that, that would be helpful.
I can briefly, the intent was to comport with the existing grade as much as possible. The site does drain into itself, there's some nice natural kettle holes in, in, in the site. The unfortunate thing is, the major depression on the site is up in the front here, where the entrance is, so therefore, when you see the road profile, you'll see some, I think, maybe a fair amount of fill to provide the roadway with, it's a relatively flat road, 1%, we'll make it any flatter, to also drain it in the same, same fashion that the existing conditions are, utilizing part of the central depression, part of that is going to be maintained as the natural vegetation and drift into the lower half, which would be part of the infiltration system, as well as the two chambers out front. So there is a fair amount of fill up in this area, because that is the low spot on the site. We did, the goal was to keep a high point and match the grade around the Dupie House, which is your high point, so we have to work from there down to the front. The goal also was with the buildings, that yes, the road may be up for drainage and gravity utilities, but to utilize the houses and try to grade them back to natural grade as quick as possible, so that you're matching existing grade on the outer portions. As Jack mentioned, we tried to put in walkouts where we could. We also want to make sure that we keep the houses above groundwater, so therefore, you get the houses up to make sure that we don't, we can have the full basement.
So the intent is to have full basements in all of the houses?
Yes.
Is it possible to do a little less fill and, and maybe even tweak the configuration in order to preserve a few more trees in the center? It seems like for buildings 12 and 13, there's some that are pretty close, that wouldn't take, I realize that the site's tight, and some of them, it just is not possible, but it seems in the center, there it might be possible, and that would give us some around the perimeter, and then some in the center, which would preserve, I think, a little bit better the character of the site.
Questions from other members of the board? Yes, no?
Oh yeah, I have a number of questions.
Well, Alex, you are recognized.
But I'd like you to answer them as I ask them. I do think we need a bigger plan showing the current features with Xs through the trees that are, are going, because you say that your concentration has been on the perimeter, but looking at the perimeter, I don't see many major site features there. So, the zoning does say that you're supposed to preserve your significant natural features, and if you don't, it seems to me you have to make an extra special effort in your new landscaping to make up for that. And I just, you know, I've looked for the landscaping plan, and is it, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem, maybe it needs to be bigger, but, and maybe the, what is going to be put in has to be legible, because I have no idea what you're going to do, having looked at this. And the landscaping is going to be hugely important, in my view. So, I think you should X out those trees that are on this existing conditions plan, that you're not going to keep, just so that we get a, a pretty good feeling for that. Now, it seems to me that you need to survey the open space. We need a survey plan, because it's going to be deeded to the condominium association, and I don't find it here. Is that, is that right?
The entire 8.55 acres will be, will be condominiumized, it's not a separate parcel. So the entire parcel will be committed to-
Well, the open space, there are requirements for the open space, and you're saying that the open space requirements will apply to everything.
The whole parcel is committed, from a condominium perspective, we're not subdividing one piece of land from another, we're committing it to the entire master deed.
But you're saying, you're saying open land shall not be used for parking, and you're going to use it for parking?
No.
Can we-
Your little parking spaces into the open land?
No.
We don't have this plan in our binder, do we?
No.
I think we do, no.
Where are the little parking areas?
Open land surrounds it.
All right, so that, that is going to be part of the roadway system.
So the dark green, just to clarify for people who are watching at home, the dark green is the open land?
The calculation of open land is shown in the dark green, but-
We need a separate plan.
2.77 acres, 32.3% of the entire site.
But you're now saying that everything is going to be open land, including the light green?
No.
No, I think the way to, I think the way to handle this, if I may, is, is that we ought to provide you with a plan, that is in black and white, that can be part of the recorded set, that is very distinct as to what is open land and what is not open land, limit of clearing line, that all survive, that is part of the sighted permit set and the recorded, a recorded drawing, so that it lasts in perpetuity, and the, and the master deed is, is subject to it, so that you have that differentiation of, of where they can be, where they can't be, what's to be remain open and what isn't to remain open.
Okay, I think, let's, let's see how that works, and the other thing is that this zoning calls for buildable pods, and it seems to me you have to survey your buildings.
I don't know what you mean by that.
Well, where are the buildings going to be, how do you locate them?
They're shown on the plan.
I understand that, but what are, what are the distances? But, I mean, how, how do we know that you have, in other words, a buildable pod is supposed to be a building, a parking area, and a sitting area, and presumably, you'd have a little outline of each buildable pod on some sort of plan, wouldn't you?
So you're saying that you want to show the private, along with the buildings that you're here, you want to see the private area that goes with it?
If you define a buildable pod as being something, you should probably show the buildable pods. And all I'm saying is, if you take your, say, say you take your site layout plan-
Sheet four.
Which is sheet four.
Yep.
How do you determine, how do you determine that these buildings are where they're supposed to be, if you don't have any, any surveying having been done? How do you know the way the road is going to be? How do you know where the road is going to be?
Survey coordinates.
Right. But that makes sense, doesn't it?
Which is what you'd do to show the open space, you'd have to have coordinates to show where the lot is.
Yeah, I mean, the way we've built these in the past is, our engineer lays out the road, gives a center line offsets, and, and then, we hire them to go stake the hole to be dug, then stake the footing in the hole. I don't know if this is the case in, in Milton, but many towns require an order for a foundation as-built plan, as part of the building permit application. Ultimately, when I commit that building and the unit- Ultimately, when I commit that building, and the units in that building, to the condominium, there's what is called a unit deed plan. The unit deed plan includes a site plan, so what happens is, as...
Well, now we're in the condominium site. Unit deed plan is going to be...
Jack, can you grab that microphone? Sorry.
Condominium will require a unit deed plan as the project was built out, and it's going to start with a blank piece of paper with the road in it, and if I start with this building, and I, and I commit this first building and its two units to the condominium, Deb is going to give me a unit deed plan and a site plan that is going to locate that building. Then when I go to this one, this one, all that happens, at the end of the job, I have one plan and a registry of deeds that shows each and every unit, shows each and where the road is, shows where the drainage is, where the fire hydrants are, where the streetlights are, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and it's a, we can, I can give you, and I'm happy to do it, I can do, give you a pod, meaning I can take this building or this building, and extract it from this plan set to show it in its own, or in the context, if you will, of this corner, how far it is from here, how far it is from here, how deep these driveways are, where the exclusive use areas for each unit are. Exclusive use, exclusive use areas is a condominium term, and says, it'll designate the driveway, the paved area in front of the garage door is, is as an exclusive use area for the benefit of unit one, for the sake of this plan only, and unit two can't park his car in front of unit one's garage. And then it'll do the same in a yard area behind, and it'll prescribe on a survey plan that is committed to the registry when I, with condominium law, phase the building into the community, and it'll describe an exclusive use yard area, if you will, that is exclusively, can be exclusively used by that unit owner only.
Just, I'm almost more curious than a question. What you're describing to me sounds like an as-built.
In a sense, it is.
That's, that's what you built, and that's where it is now, and I can go out there and do the whole project, and I go out there with a survey crew, and I could as-built it.
Yep.
Tell them where it is.
But I can give a demonstration of that, if it's helpful.
You don't have, you don't have, you don't have the survey coordinates laid out pre-building? And show us where it is today?
Well, before I can start building this building, yes, and Deb's going to give me a site plan, and that I can give to my field crew that says, I want this corner, this corner, this corner, she's going to stake it all.
You're going to give them survey coordinates, you're not going to say, I just want a 30 feet from that back line, 20 feet from this, it's, you know, it's like...
It's going to be all mathematized. If you want to see an example of that, we can produce it.
Again, I'm just commenting, I think that's, like when Alex said, the open space, you could shoot coordinates, I know that's not a straight line, but you could shoot coordinates every 20, 30 feet and map it out, and there's a plan. That's, like you stated, that's the permanent open space for, you know, forever.
Yep.
The same thing, I think he's asking with the pods, you could shoot the corners of those right now, tell us what the coordinates are on all of those.
Yeah, what I've done in the past for open spaces, there'll be a line on a drawing that'll be called limited clearing, edge of work, and it is, think of it as a wetland line, I have to go stake that, hay bale it, or silt fence it, beyond which I can't proceed, and it'll be done by survey. So if the line, you know, if this, this line is the line, Deb will essentially mathematize that, and we'll survey it in the field and put some sort of limit of clearing mark, mark.
But again, in order to, for a survey crew to go out and give somebody that line, say, put the stakes here, put the hay bales here.
Yep.
They have to have those coordinates ahead of time.
Yeah, yep, we can, we can create that, if that is to the board's liking.
You can create an example of it, rather than the whole thing.
Yes.
But it seems to me that you should, you should describe in writing exactly how you're proposing this process is going to work.
Okay.
Because if, you know, if you, if you do that, we could include that in our permit.
Yeah, and you can hold me to it, you can hold me accountable.
As a way of going about it. We do want a little bit of information about how big the yards in back are going to be, and you should think about that.
I, that, no problem, that's easy.
You know?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be the deck.
It'll be a deck.
It'll be the deck or patio, so it'll be 10 by 16, or...
Something like that.
Something like that.
It won't, won't be a little bit of, oh, your own grass?
No.
No garden area?
No garden area.
All right, well, that, okay, get us that, that, we're going to need a list of the materials. I hope that you use cedar shingles rather than something else. Cedar shingles would be good, above your wooden clavels.
That's fine. C as opposed to, what kind of shingles?
As opposed to asphalt shingles, as opposed to asphalt shingles.
Okay, all right.
Alex, what else?
Wooden, wooden shingles.
Real wood.
Real wood.
Real wood.
Yes.
Put a list of materials, and if you have samples, the board loves seeing samples.
Now, I have to admit that I am going to be very interested in what the people in the neighborhood think, and my views could be influenced by what they say, so that's all I have for right now, but don't hold me to it.
Let me check in with Mike and Brian, and then I do want to open this up to public comments, because I think people have been waiting patiently. Mike, anything for us at the moment?
I had heard some public comment that this so-called hockey stick be made, at very least inaccessible to vehicles, whether it's bollards or something to that extent, and I know you also said, may eliminate it completely.
There's no intent to make it accessible to vehicles.
We do have to have bollards.
Well, not intent, to intentionally make it accessible to vehicles, but intentionally make it inaccessible to vehicles.
It's bollard.
There are bollards there now.
Okay.
It's bollard.
Bollard at present.
All right, because I think you talked about vandalism and stuff, and I think that's probably, more than likely, my understanding is that's the access point that youths were using. Uts.
Anything else, Mike?
Just the groundwater, we presently don't know the elevation of the groundwater, do we?
We have done soil testing out there, it is approximately, no, I'm going four down, about six feet down in grade, especially in the front. We have some nice sandy material there, and the groundwater and surface runoff infiltrates naturally on the site now, so that's why we're kind of focusing on that for the stormwater drainage.
Has the town looked at the drainage yet?
It's been filed, I haven't heard anything from John as of yet.
Do you have a map which locates the test pits? Because I, and I did look at the test pits and groundwater locations, but I didn't see a map.
They should be on the existing conditions plan, but I'm not sure if you can see it on a half-size set.
Yeah, and we'll have that larger set at the next meeting.
I, I can double-check that.
You said the test pits showed the elevations of the groundwater?
Yeah, so if you go to section...
Yeah, you can see them on the...
Oh, they're there? Okay, all right. I missed that, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's in section six, Mike, towards the back. There's a number of test pits.
Yes.
Mike, is that all?
That's all I have.
Okay, great. Brian, anything?
It's a very brief question. The proposed natural basin area that's around the perimeter site, is there any disturbance in that area, or is that natural basin area, no need to, it's going to just treat it as it does today?
We have, let me see if I remember this now, three on the outer edges, natural depressions start, it's in the, yep, okay, so behind building eight and nine, that would be the one where we would be grading slightly, so that we can continue the natural flow through the site down to the front areas of final destination. So there is a little bit of grading there, but that natural depression is, I try to keep them all, is not, obviously, keep the existing vegetation and topography. Again, behind buildings five and six, that's all natural, pulled those yards back to minimize any kind of alteration there, and then the other one is in the south, southern corner, along Brush Hill, and again, that one, the depression is completely maintained.
I think there, historically, there was a pond on the Boston side that was filled at some point, and in fact, the town owns a drainage easement that...
Correct.
The town owns a drainage easement that comes roughly from that pond this way, and down the sideline, and out, connecting out to Brush Hill Road. It's completely dry now, there is a, there is a concrete drainage line that runs, but back in the 50s, the town took that drainage easement from the property by eminent domain. We have copies of those documents.
Brian, anything else? All right, so I think you've already answered my question, but I'll, I'll ask it anyway to make sure it's on the record. Because the private area is going to be limited to the driveway and the patio, I'm assuming that you will not then allow fences between the condo units.
Correct.
So it'll be all that open space and keep that work. Okay, great. So in that case, I'll ask you guys to sit back, and we're going to ask members of the public to come forward. I'm just going to read the reminder for the rules of public testimony, and I will remind people that we have two more public hearings tonight, so while I don't want you to cut your comments short, just remember that. So wait to be recognized before speaking. When you're recognized, come to the table and give your name and address, and everybody who's currently at the table will move away, so you have plenty of room. Remember to speak into the microphone, because that's also picking up the sound for the television. When you're done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to the chair, and speakers may not cross-examine the applicant, board members, or other speakers. Who would like to speak first? Come on forward.
Welcome, thank you. Tim Kernan, 642 Brush Hill Road, member of the Brush Hill Area Neighborhood Association. I did not prepare a written set of comments, which I will do, because I wasn't sure whether that would be more appropriate for next meeting or this one, but I'll just give you a quick rundown of our initial thoughts. Number one, Brush Hill Road is a scenic road, and our major concern is the impact that this development will have as one drives down Brush Hill Road, what that's going to look like. And a couple of elements feed into that. One is the width of the roadway, yeah, the width of the entrance, which currently is 17 feet now, they're proposing to widen it to 22 feet. I recognize that there are requirements, the fire department, to be able to get a fire truck in there, need to get two trucks, two vehicles to pass, but I would, I would ask that we try to minimize the width of that opening, to make it as small as we possibly can, and I believe in the current set of drawings, it shows a sidewalk, in other words, it shows the opening, a sidewalk in the roadway. We're proposing to eliminate the sidewalk, or at least take the curbing out of the sidewalk, to help make that a little narrower. We'd like to have the curbing removed from Brush Hill Road, and I think there was reference to the fact that they might substitute cobblestone of some form to that, but in other words, let's keep the, keep the curbing off and away from Brush Hill Road, and to the extent we can keep it, so that it's not even visible from Brush Hill Road, in other words, move it back past the entrance, past the, so that it's, it's a good 20 feet, excuse me, 20 feet back if it's there. The appearance of the two buildings, or the three buildings that you see from the road is critical, I believe the developer is going to address those. We wanted to keep away from a stuccoed look on those particular buildings, because we felt that there was no real stucco within the immediate neighborhood. Whether or not stucco is appropriate for the rest of the development, I'll leave for others to decide, but just the front part, it'd be nice to have that blend in with the other, other buildings, and I do recognize there's sort of a mix of existing buildings that are there. And then, the other element of this visual quality from Brush Hill Road is, as you look into the entrance, there's proposed to put a mailbox and a small utility shed, we just asked that that try to be hidden from view, so when you drive by, you don't look in and see that. I just learned tonight that this parking area is to be proposed there, but not quite sure whether those are going to be visible from the entrance or not. But again, the focus is try to make it so that when you pass by that entrance, you really don't see much, other than what you might expect to see for a historical scenic road. The other major concern of ours is the construction plan. We'd like to encourage and feel very strongly that the vehicles that are coming in and out, or accessing the site, come in through Dana Ave, come down Truman Parkway and in from Dana Ave, as opposed to up Brush Hill Road, or down Noponce Valley, well, they have to come down Noponce Valley Parkway to get into Truman, but down Milton Street or Bradley. And then the third, that was already mentioned, is the hockey stick. There is concern that that become used as a access point into the property, and I think the neighbors do want to have that sort of closed up and made to look like it's not, not a visible inviting place. So that's it, I will write those up in further detail and bring them to the next meeting for you.
Perfect, thank you. And for anybody else who wants to write comments, please send them to Tim, his email is on the website, and in case you didn't hear earlier, he'll be putting those documents, all the documents we've received, up on the website, but within the next week or so, Tim? I know it takes a bit of time.
If it's not done on Monday, I'll be very disappointed.
All right. So anybody else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
My name is Greg Mumford, I reside at 65 Cushion Road, where that hockey puck is going in between my house and my neighbor's house right there. I'm a little concerned, because I just want to know, is that considered open space for this development?
Going to let the applicant...
So, concerned about that, because it's right, right on the side of our house, we see that all the time. Secondly, I wanted to know if that lot was deeded as a 2C lot, that's the number for that lot, because when I look at my property, it says 2A plus 2C, and my lot, when I bought it, said 1.09 acres, I want to make sure I have that acreage, since I paid all that money for it, I want to make sure that it's there.
Thinking it's reasonable?
And, and then about the blockage, I wanted to make sure that I understand what's going to happen if that goes through, and none of this other stuff is there, that is conducive to my neighbor and I, and our concerns.
So Ned?
Sorry, could I ask a question?
Yeah, of course.
Just a clarification, could you just clarify what your concern about the open space is on the portion of the hockey stick, that, you know, just so the applicant can respond to it, what's your specific concern about how that...
Well, you know, my, that open space has a direct view to my backyard, you know.
Maintenance, is it how it's treated?
Yeah, people walking by, and having to cook out, I don't want people, you know...
You don't want people traveling through there.
Absolutely.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Ned? Want to address any of those?
Yes, the issue, well, let's see, respect to open space with the hockey stick, it is part of the open space calculation of the lot? I think we're ambivalent to whether that, that is a walking path or planted, there does need to be some ability to access the water line that will be run through there, but otherwise, I don't think the developer cares. There may be a couple of prospective purchasers who might like to do what the priest used to do, which was to use the hockey stick to access the church nearby, but otherwise, I don't, I don't think it's an issue from the development perspective. We have been asked, and we have double-checked the title with respect to the hockey stick. The town issued a municipal lien certificate with respect to taxes paid on that property, the municipal lien certificate, at the time of closing, the municipal lien certificate identified the Archdiocese of Boston as the owner of that lot, it was described in the deed from the Archdiocese to Northland as one of the lots that were conveyed to, there's a total of three tax lots, two on the main lot, it's sort of a, I can show it very quickly from a diagrammatic perspective, but somehow, there's a tax lot that essentially comes around the existing building, there's a separate tax lot for the balance of the property, and then this is its own tax lot. The municipal lien certificate was issued with respect to all, this is a separately identified lot, it's part of the deed, we're confident that...
So maybe if there's lingering questions, the two of you could talk to clarify.
And we have provided to the neighborhood copies of those documents in recent emails.
It seems like the neighbors more concerned with the use of the land than, because you already described earlier how the back... already described earlier how the back, some of those lots are indistinguishable where it comes and stops and goes, and people have probably maintained land that is in fact part of this development. But again, it seems to me that he's not so much concerned, and I can't speak to somebody else, with the property line as much as he is, that it's not used as a public access, because now you're walking kind of through the backyard.
Understood. And, you know, the historic use of that was obviously a walking path for the priests, who went back and forth between the house where there was the rectory and St. Pius 10 Church. I think the only use that would be contemplated would be that similar walking path for residents of the new development who may want to walk to church.
My last comment is that, say, I'm familiar with one of the neighbors, and some period of time ago, apparently the pastor of the church asked them, knowing that they had construction equipment, to berm up a big area to close that path off.
I mean, I think from our perspective, we're ambivalent, and we don't have any desire to make that an important part of the project. If the desire is to close it and not allow that access, I think then that's acceptable.
You're next.
Laura's answering.
I think he answered, yeah, all the ones.
All right.
I appreciate how responsive Ned has been.
Could you pass that microphone back over there?
And just your address.
Yes, I'm 77 Cushing Road, and I represent the Cushing Road Neighborhood Association. And we just want to reiterate that the hockey stick has a history of unfortunate use. This is a long time ago, but we don't want that history to resurface. And so, we would like to make it as inaccessible and uninviting as possible. We suggest maybe some replanting of those wild roses that are in the hillside neighborhood, and anything else with thorns, that a utility vehicle could drive right over if it needed to, but that would be very uninviting to pedestrians, especially with dogs and people who don't pick up after them. So, no trash, no dogs, no walking. Thank you.
If you have other thoughts on landscaping, let us know.
Okay, anything with thorns. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Anybody else? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Dwayne Day. I'm at 53 Cushing. And I am abutting the hockey stick as well. And again, it's the same thing as all my neighbors have suggested. In the past, we've had kids up in that area doing what kids do, and it's a concern. Now, the other thing is with the hockey stick and with our property, my wife and I at 53, is I believe we have the most land area, the largest square footage of abutting property to this project. Our backyard, our side yard, is a large, is a huge space. And so, we're going to be neighbors with this project more than anyone else is going to be neighbors with this property. Now, in the years past, when it rains heavy, water does settle in the back of all the Cushing Road properties abutting this project. There was a year when we had a lot of rain, and you can actually watch the water coming up towards our house back there. Now, if they're going to grade this area where their house is going to be higher, if they're going to be building up so that they can have basements, water rolls downhill. And so, I believe that would cause more water to collect in that area if their properties are higher than what's already there. So that's a concern. So, with that being said, there's also going to be, I don't know which buildings or pods, as you call them, that abuts the Cushing Road properties. Could we know what they are? Because you spoke about these pods before. What are the pods that are bordering the Cushing Road properties? What numbers are they?
Do we have a microphone?
So, I think, this is Mr. Days.
Yes.
Property, Building 8. It's here, it's three units. Building 9, Building 10, Building 11 are the four buildings that abut the rear of the lots on Cushing.
Okay. Now, you're going to grade those to be higher, so you can have sellers, correct?
Finished.
They're going to be excavated with basements, but the grading is going to be done in such a way that the drainage is going to come out from the rear to the front, and it's not going to be graded to drain towards the rear. Specifically to that, Kevin.
Specifically behind Building 8, which is...
Make sure you have the mic, sorry.
There is, as stated, a depression in this area of the site, so therefore, that was the location of one of the natural depressions. We were cognizant of that when we were looking at the drainage and analyzing that, and have added a relief to that area. So in the larger storms, the runoff from that area will tie into the proposed system and be accounted for in the lower portion, the front of the site, so that we don't impact or, as you mentioned, creep back up into the abutting property. And so that we make sure that we maintain the current condition out there and not increase it. So...
The present grade, it seems as though 8, 9, 10, building, probably in the north corner, Building 10 is the high point, that runs forward and backwards.
That is correct. And there's another natural depression right in this corner here as well, where this flows, so we've taken that into consideration as well.
I know you've got significant plans here, but just, you said where it runs back to the low point where this gentleman's property is, you said you wanted to tie that into the existing system, and how are you going to tie that into the existing system? Are you going to have a catch basin back there?
There's a head wall with an inlet, so that we can tie it with a closed drainage into the system on Road C, which links down into the larger stormwater system on the site. So what will happen is, for instance, in a small storm event, one of the more frequent, a quarter, an inch, or an inch rainstorm, can be held all back in that depression, but anything that gets up over, for the life of me, I'm drawing a blank on the elevation, but a flooding elevation, there would be the relief with that head wall that would then flow through the site's drainage system and be compensated through there. So we did look at, in the drainage, you can see, I evaluated the elevation in that area to make sure that we weren't increasing that from the existing condition.
Is the head wall shown in the plans?
It is, yes, it is.
On 5. I'm looking at it now, yeah.
So we did the similar, same idea for, to add relief. As Ned mentioned, in the past, there was a drainage easement to address the low area along the property line with the Boston Housing Authority property. In lieu of sort of upgrading that area and disturbing all of that buffer to do anything within that easement, we've provided a second head wall between Buildings 4 and 5, which would then bring drainage back through the central portion of the site again, addressing any overflows within the stormwater system on the site.
By the sounds of it, you'll get, you typically get a pond, a little pond where the property line is.
Where mosquitoes can feast, sir.
It sounds like you'll still get a little pond, but where you said it starts growing and coming towards your house?
Right.
At a certain elevation, this head wall structure will pick it up and drain it off.
Okay.
So it won't get, it won't keep going.
Won't keep going.
Yes.
You'll still get some little pawning there, I would expect.
And then at the same time, for my neighbors, because I'm concerned about my neighbors as well?
Sure.
That will continue all the way down towards Brushhill Road?
That's correct. As stated, approximately behind Building 10 here, there's sort of a break in the natural grade as to what flows towards this location on the site and what flows towards this corner. So we've addressed them similarly with the natural depressions that are there.
Lovely. Okay, now also, if I can take a little bit more time, what is going to be in place as a divider? I mean, we, I understand that there's going to be a wall on the side of Dana, there's a brick in front of Cushing, I mean, of Brushhill, but what is going to be, again, if you would?
We're proposing a low split rail fence. So the fence would be about this high with posts and two log rails. So...
There's a detail on the ground.
There's a detail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And these will all be online, so you have a chance to review them as well.
Two rail fence, open.
So, the idea was, and we had conversations with others of your neighbors, at least last year, particularly Paul and Sarah, who came to a number of meetings with us. The notion was, do we put a fence as a barrier that you then have to plant in front of, or do we create some sort of structure that demarcates the line, but which we can plant so that there's a significant green barrier buffer between the properties, but you don't have, you know, a six or eight or 10-foot wall that sort of blocks your view? And so, the plan is to do that low-level split rail fence to mark that property line with then the significant planting that goes in between. That same thing will happen on this property over here, the rear of the Moses property on Dana. This has a wall, it's not a, the stones are together, but they're not mortared together, that runs along this property line, and that will be preserved.
Okay. I, like Mr. Mumford, paid a lot of money for my property, and at the same time, would love to continue to have the beautiful lush greenery that provides a beautiful privacy for my property against what you're doing, and I'm not against what you're doing, but if you're going to have decks on the rear of all these properties, and there are four buildings with three units apiece that are going to have three separate decks off of them in the back, that's a lot of people that could actually view into my backyard, and that's some concern. I believe my wife feels the same way.
No, we, understood, and so, dense greenery is what's proposed, so that it creates a visual barrier, we're just not proposing to do it with a fence that creates a wall.
Very good. And the HOA will maintain this green lush barrier?
The... Condominium Association.
HOA Condominium Association.
Yes, the housing association will be required as a condition of the establishment of the condominium to maintain that area.
Lovely. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
It seems to me that we need to ask John Thompson to specifically look at the issues in back there and say that in his view, the drainage will be improved.
Does anybody else wish to speak on this? Yes, sir, please come forward. Didn't you get a note of that?
Yeah. He has this application, I'm going to check in on him, he's going to have a chance to look at it and comment on it.
John Moses, 269 Dana Ave. Would just make a quick comment. As has been noted, the fence that borders the Boston property is porous, and there's a lot of traffic that goes through there. If the fence only extends along the property line, I think the porosity, you know, the people who are cutting through, it's going to be easier to cut through, I think. And that's why we suggest that the fence be extended all the way out to Dana. Thank you.
That's the intent presently? Ned, extend it right out to Dana?
The present intent was not to extend it out to Dana, but we did meet Mr. Moses, he's a new neighbor, he actually moved in in the last year, and we met with him as part of the larger group, and he did ask that we consider extending the fence out to Dana, and I think that's under consideration.
Which would be on his property line, between his property line and Boston.
All along his property line, because his property line abuts City of Boston. And if I may add one other comment I didn't respond to, there's a request for a construction vehicle haul route, if you will. I think that's going to be very difficult to honor. The request would be the vehicles would come in off of Route 128, up Route 138 to Napanza Valley Parkway, down the hill at Napanza Valley Parkway, into the City of Boston, around to Dana Avenue, and up a significant hill, which is very narrow, coming out Dana to Brushhill, taking a right on Brushhill and into the property. I'm not sure how that, I mean, that's difficult to enforce. I think it would be difficult to enforce in the City of Boston. I drove that recently, it is a very tight set of neighborhoods on the Boston side. Introducing a volume of concrete mixers and other construction vehicles might be difficult in that regard. So I would ask the board to consider a more reasonable route, either Bradley Road or down Napanza and up Brushhill. I mean, you've got to have a fairly direct route, and I think that it'd be difficult to say that vehicles coming to the site have to leave Milton and enter into the City of Boston and come back in the back door through the City of Boston. I just think that's a difficult ask.
Well, every route has neighbors.
Right.
And maybe the approved route needs to be thought about. If there is going to be a different route, if truckers are going to have a specified route, the people who live on the route should get a chance to comment.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? All right, seeing none, we need to figure out what we've got. I've been keeping a list, Tim, you've been keeping a list, and I'm assuming you've been keeping a list, so we can communicate by email. Did anybody else have any other questions from the board members? If not, we're going to continue to this to June 11th, and I'm going to suggest 7:00. We don't have anything posted for June 11th already.
I don't think we do. Do we want to use this opportunity to start our meetings at 7?
That's why I thought I'd put this one for 7:00, and then we can have that discussion after we get through the other public hearings.
Yeah, because if we started the meeting at 7:00...
Ah, but if we don't agree to start at 7:00, then we are holding out for half a, you know, 45 minutes. So let's put it for 7:00. We can always start five minutes earlier that particular day. So, continue to 7:00 on June 11th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next order of business. Yes, don't start.
Thank you. I just want to let you know that I will not be able to be present on the 11th, but Ned and the rest of the team will be. I have to attend a sporting event with one of my daughters out of state, but I have eminent faith in these guys.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, so we have a special permit and site plan approval for Thayer Nursery. This was the continuation from our last meeting on May 14. And we are going to follow a similar process for this. We're going to receive an update from the applicant on questions that we asked the last time. The board will then have some more questions for the applicant and continue with the matrix that we were using last time. And then we will be taking testimony from members of the public on discussions that we are holding today. So not previous items, but today's discussions. And Ned, I will recognize you to give us an update.
Thank you. I think I could have a moment.
Of course. I think we also need a moment to shift some papers around as well, so...
If you have a moment to take a walk outside and wander back in, I would appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's getting a little hot in here, actually.
Yeah.
So then, while we're taking a break to organize ourselves, again, we have one other hearing tonight on 333 Brushhill Road, which we'll take up after we've done there. And then we have a discussion of our master plan tonight, and that will finish us up. So, we'll move on to that. Brian, while we're filling in some time here, we were talking about June, the June public meeting for the process of getting us to the zoning in October 2015. And we had some dates that were given out to you all. Looks like everybody is happy with June 22nd, 24th, 29th, or 30th, not all of them. So I wanted to check.
A little nervous there.
So I wanted to check and see where you were. And then the other, while you're looking up your calendar, the other thing we were talking about is what we're doing for that. So we're going to be doing a visual preference survey... So we're going to be doing a visual preference survey, where we show people images on things like signs and condominiums and so forth, and get an idea of what people prefer or do not prefer. So I'll be in touch with each person separately to discuss what they want in that. We'll probably also be handing out a questionnaire and having some boards up for people to react to. So you should be thinking of questions you'd like to ask as part of that, and images you'd like to present to people. So, and I'll be in touch. How are you on those dates?
22, 29, 30, and the 24th was the other one?
Yep.
I can do anything but the 24th.
All right, so X on the 24th. Great. So I will take another look and confirm with Tim and get back to all of you on that.
Do you have a time on this, so I can put a hold?
My guess is it'll probably be around 7:00. It tends to work best to allow people to get back from the city on time. And then it'll last hour and a half, two hours at most. And we will confirm probably Cunningham Hall or Fuller Village for that.
These will be larger meetings.
Both of them have good parking, which is always nice when you're doing a public meeting.
Brian, you should review the tape and file the certification.
I will review the tape for the beginning, yes, and I'll file the certification as well, yes. Thank you, Alex.
And then Alex, I think you and Brian, we're going to talk about the condo.
Yeah, it's up for next week.
This, the
The working group would be
The Greatest States?
Would be the first week in June if we do it.
That's going to be, I assume that's going to be the Greatest States Committee? That's not going to involve, or?
I think, I don't think you guys have had a chance to talk it through, so. Why don't you, because I think you'll probably want to talk to the members and see if they want to be on both or one or the other.
Okay.
So we'll go with that. And then I have to, because we promised to appoint a committee for the sign by law review, so I need to get in touch with the sign review committee, the Board of Selectmen, and our citizen volunteer and set that up. And I will do that for our next meeting, and then we can confirm the members. The other thing we need to do at our next meeting, we haven't done it yet, is we have several liaison positions that we need to confirm who's doing what, so.
Alex, that meeting is the first?
It is, anytime. If it were the first Wednesday in June,
It would be the first.
It would be
Third. First is Monday.
On July, you're right.
Probably the, probably the 8th.
Is that the Monday in June?
Or a week, a week from that Wednesday.
The membership would probably, they've been in a little bit of a hold. They've been in a little bit of a holding pattern for the past couple weeks.
So what do they want? They want to do it on the first?
No, no, just some notice about, we're going to redo this, we're going to start meeting again. So meeting next week, I don't think we'll be, we're talking about the condo group, right?
It needs lead time.
Yeah, exactly.
I would agree.
How about a week from next Wednesday?
It would be the 10th. Okay.
And that would be great, if you could, the two of you could bring up with them this public forum and get some input from them, that will still be enough time to make any adjustments to what we're going to show, so. And again, this public forum is just a kickoff. It's not, we're not presenting language yet. We're just starting to pick on people's ideas for what they're interested in and what they're not interested in, so.
Alex, I'll send you an email with my initial thoughts, and then we can
What's what?
I'll send you an email with my initial thoughts.
That's fine. That'd be great, thanks.
Running out of time, aren't we?
Well, I've heard that at least our third one is not going to be
This is two hours behind.
I know. Ned, are you ready?
I am ready.
All right. Then we are now opening the public hearing.
Appreciate the board's indulgence. I think I have a brief update.
Okay.
In the last couple of weeks, DeSalle and Burke have been out to the property to finish the topographical of the area where the trench was dug along approximate to the Rowe and Johanning property line. They've done preliminary turning template plan showing the, how trucks can access from Hillside onto Forest. Those plans are in, I received them yesterday, today in draft form. I'm not prepared to present to them tonight because there are some details that need to be cleaned up, and I don't think it'd be fair to the board to present it tonight, in any event. So what I would propose is to have those plans put into final form, submit it next week, so the board has time to review, digest, prepare its comments and questions, and go from there. We don't yet have the turning analysis done on the inside of the property. We've done on the outside of the property. We do know that it works on the outside of the property. That Forest Street itself is 30 feet wide. It's, the paved area is 22 feet wide, but the town owns four feet on either side. So the area that has been proposed for hard cap is actually owned by the town. It is not owned by the abutters. I've confirmed that with Joe Lynch, or at least had a preliminary conversation seeking to confirm that with Joe Lynch at the town. But the width of the right-of-way is from the wall to the fence along that location. And it does appear, it does appear from the turning analysis that trucks can enter from Hillside onto Forest and into the site driveway without affecting the non, the unpaved shoulder. But we think, given a fair amount of other recent truck activity out there that is unrelated to Thayer Nursery, in fact, the other day, there was a truck that came down Forest from Chickatahbit, tried to make a left onto Hillside, going to one of the construction sites there, got hung up, rutted the grass, caused some significant, a fair amount of damage, and got hung up. There wasn't a truck that was coming or leaving the site. That something ought to be done to treat that property. And I think what we're proposing is appropriate, but we'll, I think, get into that in more detail when we present the turning radius information in two weeks. There is a site walk as part of a separate action. Engineers hired by Rowe and Johanning will be on the site on Tuesday to evaluate the trench. They will be joined by Jim DeSalle on behalf of Thayer, and lawyers on both sides. There'll be some, presumably, I would gather that the engineers would at least reach some level of agreement as to what the issues are and how best to address them. So the final drainage plan ought to accommodate, incorporate whatever those comments might be. And so that'll be part of what will be presented to the board when we submit the final, the final draft of the drainage and proposed conditions plan. So all of those will be on a plan. We have them in draft form. They're not ready to submit, and it wouldn't be fair to the board, I think, tonight, to submit them without a chance to review them, in any event. Other than that, I would open it to the board's questions and comments, and we'll be prepared to respond as best we can.
So last time, we ended up on G parking plan. That's where we stopped for the evening. We had skipped over ours, and Tim has been doing some work researching on ours. So I'll leave it up to the board members. Do you wish to progress forward with G? I should say, Section 4 goes not through G, but all the way through, where did it go? R, I believe. So we still have quite a bit to get through on this. I'm going to remind the board that what we're looking for is, obviously, information that is, identifying information that is unclear, that we need more details on. And then the second part is, what are the quantifiable and enforceable elements that would go into a draft special permit? So in some cases, it's quantities, in some cases, it's times. So as you look at this, in some cases, it may be geographic location. As we go through this, we need to consider what those would be. So, your pleasure, parking plan or ours?
The order would call for parking plan.
Then let's, I'm happy with parking plan, and then we can go back. So, parking plan, G. So this is parking areas and driveways. It's the number of parking spaces and how they're shared, and where they're located. So do members of the board have any questions on this? And if you're following along in the application, which, Tim is online?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the application that was dated, let me find it, October. Oh, this is the one that was resubmitted when we had to reopen the public hearing. So it's dated October 21st, 2014, but it was resubmitted in February. So, it's on page 10, and on our matrix.
Page 7.
Page 7, thank you. So, and on the matrix, again, for those of you listening in, we have the requirement, what was proposed by the applicant, and the reference in the application, any notes about compliance, the board proposals, timelines or other requirements, the butter proposals that would come in to certain areas and building conditions also submitted a memo. And in this case, Tim, you're noting that the parking plan is compliant. Alex, I believe you raised a question on location last time. Is that correct?
Location of spaces?
Yes, I think that's what you said.
Well, I was, where is the reliable analysis of the amount of parking required, Tim?
You will notice on page 8 that 4G parking plan should include a reliable analysis going to parking space needed for business operations. I did note that there's no analysis included under compliance, so.
I mean, that's the, that is the issue. The issue is how much parking to require. We know what they want to require.
Oh, there you are, yes.
And the board has to determine how much to require, if different, and
How many parking spaces were on the site in 2012, which is our benchmark year, right? Is that in our document someplace?
I don't know that that's in our document. Do we have that information?
I don't think we ever identified what was there in 2012. I think it's essentially what's there, or what's shown on the plan now.
The number of spots isn't generated by the business type?
Definitely is. The landscaping component of the business requires less parking. Retail side, nursery, agricultural side requires more parking. And the parking numbers proposed in this application are the same, no more than in 2012.
But no less either, right?
Correct.
And you have reserved spaces 1 through 16 for customers, 17 through 24 for employees, and 25 through 34 for the parking of equipment when not in use.
Correct.
And I think there was a question last time about where those last set of parking spaces would be located, whether they would be behind the barn, on the eastward side of the barn, or perhaps move to the landcare yard. It's our thought that parking them to the other side of the link of the barn is probably more appropriate. It's quieter area, and it's away from, it's at least one thing that gets moved away from Pam Lepore, further away than parking those in an area that's more approximate to her property.
And I note that on the script, we have a request from the abutters that the trucks that are not in use park where the tent spaces of customer parking are located presently at the front of the property, so. And that would be judging by the
This is 1 through 10, right?
Yeah, 1 through 10, exactly. Do you have any?
The analysis, I mean, for a restaurant typically, the number of seats determines the number of parking spaces. Exactly the math, I don't know off the top of my head.
It depends on the zoning. I mean, yeah, it can vary by town.
It's just in just one for every three seats.
When I hear analysis, I think it's a nursery, that's the business type. After that, you would go probably to square footage to determine.
It's usually how it's done for retailer, commercial. And there's usually standards. Okay, so while you're doing that
Is this covered in the special permit under the Board of Appeal, Ned, parking? And does our bylaw have parking for nurseries?
No.
The general
General bylaws, four per thousand square feet.
One complicating factor here would be what square footage to use. My familiarity with the site just says that, you know, at least the barn and the garden shop and probably the set or shed are merchandisable areas, are currently used as merchandisable areas. If you add those up, you get around 4,500 square feet, which would make the parking ratio, if you include the employee parking, but probably exclude the storage parking, that would be 24 spaces divided by 4 and 1/2. So you're right, you're in that 5, 5,000 range. Does everyone understand how I just did that math?
Okay.
I agree with what you did, again, that you
I mean, I don't know if that's appropriate or how to calculate it over the nursery. There's nothing that I can find quickly.
I think if you're asking for analysis, you're asking for math. If you're asking for math, you've got to determine some kind of standard for, usually, different businesses have different standards. I mean, obviously, restaurants, you know, there's probably more people per square foot than a nursery, and
In the town, I think we did, there was
There must be some places, there's a standard for a nursery that, you know
And we need to, we need the nursery, and we need the required for the landscaping business.
You could, I mean, landscaping business, again, I mean, I got to figure that, I got to agree, that's probably minimal, you know. Anybody that's ever done the landscape, me, I've been to their site.
But you have to have enough spaces for the nursery, and then you have to put, even if it's minimal, you have to then put the additional spaces on top of that, because you can't, that means you just have to have enough space for both uses.
Unless they're going to do a shared parking calculation and determine when each type of use is most likely to need parking.
How is the parking been determined for the other nursery businesses in town? There is no method?
Adequacy, presumably by inadequacy of determination that was made by the Board of Appeals.
And in my experience, there are some communities in which actual parking spaces versus calculated spaces is a reasonable way in which to come up with a number. So if they've been in business for how many years, and they've determined that this is the number of parking spaces that they need, have we heard that there's a problem with parking on site that would lead us to believe that more spaces are required?
So then I think there have been some complaints that during peak hours, peak holiday hours, that there have been parking on the street that was accommodating for that, but I don't know that we've heard complaints about regular customer parking. I don't recall any.
Not even peak hours, just special events, maybe three times a year. And we hire a detail and do everything that the town requires to mitigate that problem.
My memory is that the most complaints have been about where the equipment will be parked, rather than where the customers will be parked.
So that's the addressing, the parking in the tent spaces, marked 1 through 10?
Yeah.
There's an anecdotal, I've been there a lot, weekends and weekdays. Never more than two hours.
The bylaw requires an analysis?
All it says is reliable analysis will accompany
I mean, I think the point is, I don't think the parking is such an issue other than the fact that the bylaw says they're looking for analysis. And to me, you know, narrative is fine, but it's not an analysis.
What I would propose that we could do is just sort of see what the standards in the industry are and take that approach.
Perhaps some kind of
Peak hours, we know when our peak hours are. Based on our sales on our computer, we could generate a correlation between those hours and spaces required.
Something like that.
Yeah, I think that would work. Now then, to the position of the equipment, once it's parked. So you've proposed back behind the barn, the applicants have requested in spaces 1 through 10, which presumably the equipment would be parked after hours, so you wouldn't be needing those for customer. Do you have
A lot of the equipment stays on site, too.
Okay. Okay.
So even though we have an inventory of equipment, it doesn't mean that equipment comes back to the nursery every night. So we have two or three projects going on as we, so a lot of this stuff just stays, we're making a concentrated effort to leave, if we come to your house and we're going to be there for two or three days, rather than bring the bobcats and miscellaneous equipment home, it stays at your house.
When you start the vehicles up in the morning, how long do they run before they get moved? Because I think one of the things that we've heard consistently is the, the issue of diesel fumes, and obviously you start up a car, or a truck rather, and you've got the diesel fumes going, how long, you know, are you warming it up for five minutes and then moving it? How does this work?
That would be predicated on the seasonality of the type of, of the year, and in the fall, to warm up a diesel generally takes a little bit longer time to do that, meaning maybe six minutes for a vehicle. But we're making a concentrated effort now to turn the key, and a minute and a half, just enough to get the fluids and the trucks to a point where it's safe to move.
Well, one of the advantages of having it parked next to the barn is we don't need to start them up and move them, because if it's right next to the barn, we can load it straight, the tools from the tool shed, straight onto the truck, so the truck doesn't have to get moved. I think if it's parked out front, then you have to start it up, let it warm up, then drive it out back to the tool shed, load up, then move it over to get loaded with mulch, so there's more movements on the property than if, I think if you kind of parked it where you can load it. We don't have to start it up quite as early.
Any other questions on geography of parking? You'll come back to us with the, with the analysis. Okay. All right, so then the next thing is 4H, which is building plans. So we've got a narrative talking about what each building is and what it's used for. And this is effectively a narrative, so, you know, it's not like we're going to suddenly say that the garden shop is not the garden shop, but the question is, is there any information that's unclear here?
Any, that all the buildings are labeled accordingly on the plan?
Yes, yes, thank you. I should have said that the narrative matches up to the labels on the plan. And it's given the height, the square footage, and as I've said before, the purpose. And Tim has a note on our matrix here that new concrete material bins appear to be the only new proposed structures. That's correct, you're not building anything else here, okay. Alex, yes?
The specification of business use is appropriately limited for all the buildings.
That's a good question. Do you have a question about a particular building, or is that a general question?
I am just asking Tim.
Okay.
Because he did the matrix.
And did, I might say, an excellent.
I, don't get me wrong, I think this matrix is fantastic.
I, I think that's an appropriate thing for, to be discussed at this table.
But, you know, we, we can't, because we don't, we don't have all the information at our fingertips.
Well, it's described on page 10, what the garden shop is used for. Is there more information than that that you're looking for, Alex? Like, for example, I'm just curious.
Going through the application?
Yeah.
So are you thinking...
It's just, what I'm talking about basically is that the gift shop, if the use is saying, selling non-agricultural gifts, that possibly is not a permitted use.
But then the question becomes, what's permitted under the ZBA special permit?
I understand that, but we...
And what are we permitting?
I understand that, but we have, we have to determine that.
Well, what I would say is that this board would not be allowed to permit anything that is not allowable via the zoning. So if there's something in here that is not something we're permitting, we're not addressing it.
Well, then it shouldn't be in the application.
Well, it certainly shouldn't be in a draft special permit, yes.
Well, I mean, but, but the, what we're trying to do is get to the point that we can draft something.
Absolutely.
Rather than say, these are issues that we're going to have to consider when we draft it.
So then what we would have to do is say, for example, the garden shop is not something that we would be including in a draft special permit, because it is solely a nursery-related building. Is that what you're saying?
That's not what I'm saying.
Oh, then define what you're saying.
What I'm saying is that the uses in the buildings have to be proper uses under some part of their operations, either their Dover use, Dover use, whatever that may be, under their nursery business, or under the landscaping business. And if it doesn't fall under any of those, then it shouldn't be the use of the building.
I mean, what, I mean, what I can do, if, if it's something that, I mean, we have in, in section 2 lays out what the permissible uses for a landscape business are, you know, I, I hadn't gone through and cross-referenced each one of these, there's seven or eight permissible uses with what's specified in the building plans, but that's, that's definitely something that I can...
Let's just, let's just take the artisans. That may, that isn't a permissible use.
Agreed.
And if it's in the application, it shouldn't be in the application, and if it says the building will be used for the artisans, then we should say, but that's not a permissible use, and therefore it shouldn't be done. But I think we should say that, rather than say that when we get to writing the permit, we'll figure it out.
I'm just, I, I don't disagree that if it's not a permissible use, it shouldn't be on the site. I agree on that. My question is, what is our authority to, our authority is very specific, that our authority is limited to what is in this permit, as far as, I'm not sure that we get to, I, I'm not sure that I see, we're not revised...
We have no authority to determine what a nursery use is?
Well, no. Our authority is limited to the landscaping business. It's what it says on the zoning. The ZBA's authority is on the nursing, on the nursery use, and if it's anything that's not on our special permit or in the nursery use, they shouldn't be doing it.
Okay, then, any use that isn't a landscaping use has to be taken out of the application, any use.
Yeah.
Which is just about everything.
If you look at our zoning, we are limited to the landscaping.
That doesn't make any sense.
Hey, town meeting passed the zoning.
Right.
We are limited to the zoning. The zoning specifies it's for landscaping use.
I think that we can figure out what the permissible uses for the combined operation are. That's what I think.
We are not granting a special permit for the nursery use. That is under the ZBA's authority, not ours.
All this is going to do is that we are going to have a nightmare of enforcement saying, oh, well, that's the ZBA, go, go complain to them. Oh, no, that's the planning board, go complain to them. This isn't, I foresee some lot of problems here, if that's how we're going to do it.
How are you, how was your intent to deal with this? Were you going to specify within the special permit what the nursery uses are?
I, I've made it clear that you take the combined operations, all of them, and you put them into the permit. If there are, so that we know what they should be doing. In other words, having people say, oh, that was our nursery business, and we started up the tractors. If they want to do landscaping on the site, then all their operations, which are in any way related to landscaping, and that involves providing materials, selling trees, digging holes, using their equipment, is all part of the same ball of wax, and it has to all be covered, and if it's not all covered, we're going to have a big problem by bifurcating it into two separate permits, saying, that's the Board of Appeals Department.
I don't have any injections to the combined quantities of material, I don't have any injections to consistency of hours between these two permits and the two different businesses. I think that all makes a lot of sense, because as you can, as you say, how are you going to tell the difference between the two? But I don't know about the buildings, and I'd be interested to hear what the other members say.
The, the, I'm, I'm not even casting any kind of opinion.
Right.
But the permit as it stands right now, or the, I'm sorry, the application as it stands right now includes the buildings and their descriptions that are used, which looks like almost exclusively for nursery business.
Right, and that's fine, because we require them.
That's what's required, and under section 4, it's requiring them to do that.
Yeah, we require them to, we require them to do that.
It just says here that it shall include the plans and descriptive text. So while that we're, they're being asked to supply it in terms of, in the context of the property, I think the question is whether that's actually something that the, is regulated by...
Right.
By the bylaw. And in looking at the bylaw, there's, there's lots of information in, in here that says these two can coexist. So it's, it's showing which businesses are using which parts of the facility, I think in the context of understanding the whole site is fine, but to say that we're going to regulate the things that are just there for context, I think is wrong.
The problem is purpose, number one, purpose, and number two, definition of landscaping business and permissible activities. The purpose of the subsection is to permit, permit the ongoing operations of landscaping businesses. It doesn't give us, it doesn't mention the...
It didn't really say anything about nursery.
It doesn't mention the nursery at all under purpose, and under two, definition of landscaping business, it defines that, and then elsewhere, it said, then under three, it says landscaping services can exist on a lot with other uses, including agriculture, greenhouse, nursery, and/or residential, which is why we then ask for the description later on of what these are.
So then, in reality, it sounds to me like there's no problem with what Alex is asking for.
Well, I'm not entirely clear, to be honest, what he's asking for. I understand...
That they explain the uses of each building.
Which they do.
Which they do.
And I have no objection to that, we've asked for that, that's fine. What I'm saying is, if this makes it to a draft special permit stage, we don't have the authority to regulate uses other than landscaping uses.
Right. But if they just, but just...
But having the description, I have no problem with.
Just to try to...
But that description doesn't go into the draft special permit.
Well, yes and no, I mean, if there's six buildings and you describe three as basically exclusively nursery use, and three as landscape use, then it should go into the special permit, because someday someone was going to force it and say, well, wait a minute, now you're using all six buildings for the landscape, that, that's not allowable, you told us these three buildings could stay in nursery.
Okay, then that I agree with.
Which is, I think, what Alex was getting at.
If that's what Alex is getting at, then I misunderstood, and I think that's reasonable.
Well, no, I think, I think the conversation was necessary to...
Yeah. Was that what you were getting at?
Look...
You were, you were in enforcement, so if you, if you're going to enforce it, you're going to need to know what things are used for.
If...
Landscape or not.
If you're going to describe the uses of the buildings in the permit, and if you're going to just have landscaping uses, you've got to exclude your nursery uses from this, so we know what the landscaping uses are of the building, if that's how we're going to do it, which I don't think is the right way to do it, because I think that it is going to be a nightmare of enforcement, but...
But would you do what, would you be willing to do what Mike said, which is define the uses within each building, and specify whether they're landscaping or nursery, and then remove the ones that are not allowed?
I think it's, I think it's fine. They say, these are nursery uses, which is basically all the uses in all the buildings, except for a few, like the headquarters, where they take orders for landscaping. I mean, most of the stuff that the landscaping business does is done outside.
Well, if you go through the list of buildings, you have, you have 10 buildings here, 1 through 5 seem to be all related to nursery uses, 6, which is the wood barn, 7 is the tool shop, 8 is the fuel shed, dry storage, 9 is recyclable compost plot, and 10 is the bulk agricultural earth material bins for the new business. It seems to me that 6 through 10 are buildings that are associated with the landscaping business use, and I don't see in their descriptions references to uses that would be associated with the nursery, except that I assume there's some crossover from the standpoint of maintaining or managing the nursery business from the standpoint of stock and whatnot, but...
And equipment use.
Equipment, yeah.
That's what I'm getting at, right, I'm sorry. So certainly 1 through 5 could be excluded from any sort of landscaping business, based on the descriptions here.
But I, I think, again, if you, if they're in the permit, as discussed, just in context, it would, it would...
But this isn't the permit, this is just the application.
No, no, I understand that.
I mean, I think the good news is you've got the descriptions here, this lays out the format by which we say, good, don't use 1 through 5, that they're not included in your special permit for landscaping businesses.
I guess that's...
These plans, this is supposed to be the plan, this is supposed to be the building plan, which is going to be incorporated into the special permit.
The plan or the application?
The plan.
The plan, I, okay, but so the plan...
The plan specified in the application is supposed to be the plan that we're going to adopt for the special permit. It's going to be the building plan. There's supposed to be all these discrete plans that we've adopted. In other words, we're going to have an operations plan, which is going to be attached as appendix, whatever. I mean, possibly, I, I mean, it may not be, but...
I agree with you. I was expecting, when we received the application, that section 4 would just be a physical plan after plan after plan, because section 7, which is the requirements, I expected to be the narrative that matched those plans, if you see what I mean. So we've got some, the reason we're starting with 4 is because it does tie to the plans, but when we get to 7, we've actually got a lot of repetition. I expect that we're not going to have to go through all of 7, because we'll actually have hit it. So I, I agree with you on that.
So I think it makes sense to do what Brian says, though, which is to say that, you know, barn, or whatever the, the buildings are that are called out, 1 through...
1 through 5.
5, you know, could be noted as nursery use only, and that could be marked on the, this plan as well.
Yeah, they're not numbered here.
And then 6 through 10.
So we'd have to refer to them by the garden, the labels on the building.
Yeah, you'd want to have consistent labeling across the, the written and the plan, right? And if it, if those buildings are not used for the landscaping business, then it could just be noted as such.
And shall not be used for landscaping business.
In the special permit, and they're labeled by their name as listed on the plan, record.
Anything else on buildings? And also, if we put the, as we put the use into the special permit, we should make sure that we are not inadvertently authorizing a use we're not allowed to authorize.
So we're going to, the recycled compost, we're going to make clear is just for...
Staging.
My stuff.
Right.
And where is, where is, where is the dumpster?
Yeah, actually, I was going to ask about the dumpster, we haven't gotten to it yet, but...
But that's, that's actually is part of this building plan.
So dumpster location?
It's on the recycled compost plot.
Oh, is that that square?
It's the square.
Okay. Good to know.
Under 9, it says that houses the compost and dumpsters.
Okay. Thank you.
But compost, we decided was not determined, right terminology, it's more of a brush pile.
The brush pile.
Dead wood.
Where is, the square is the dumpster?
The square is the dumpster.
Maybe, the dumpster should be...
No, the square is the pad, on which the bunk dumpster and the brush pile sit. I've never seen a 100 square foot dumpster, I don't think. No, it's more of a...
It's an eight-yard dumpster.
It would be more convenient for pickups if it were somewhere else.
And it gets, it gets dumped twice a month.
Twice a month?
What goes into the dumpster?
Office trash, burlap, and things like that that are generated.
That's a nursery.
They're pretty selective in terms of what goes into dumpsters these days, so no construction debris.
Okay. Anything else on buildings? No, we move on to the related list of business activities. And I think we've had a number of conversations about this, but this particular section, as opposed to earlier sections, seems to follow what we're allowed to do in the parent opportunity. So it's defined the nursery, and then it lists Christmas trees and holiday season sales, firewood sales, and landscaping... firewood sales, and landscaping, landscaping services, and snow management, all of which would be covered under the landscaping draft special permit.
Well, then, buildings one through six are not all nursery.
Well, then, that's a very good point.
He's just going to say something else. Christmas sales appear to be on both. And did we discuss that already? I apologize.
We've, we've talked about it, it needs to be on one or the other, so I think
And that may eliminate that one issue on the building use, if that were to be eliminated.
Well, but here's the question is, do we want, do we as the board want to eliminate it? I mean, the applicant may have one opinion and we may have another, so I think we want to discuss that.
Eliminate what?
One of the things that, Christmas trees and holiday season sales.
Is that because it's all covered under the special permit from the Board of Appeal?
They've applied for them.
They're covered under the Dover amendment.
They
So you would take it out of the landscape business?
Originally applied for it and then they removed it in one of the supplemental sets of materials.
But, but the landscaping business may be authorized to sell Christmas trees and other holiday materials.
Exactly, and if we are interested
If the sales occurred in 2012, if substantial sales occurred in 2012.
So then the question may be, if we are trying to write a permit that covers as much as possible, do we want to include the Christmas trees and other holiday materials?
Why do we want to cover as much as possible if we're going to make big exclusions in it anyhow?
We're not
I mean, the, the bigger the exclusion, the less people can complain to us and the fewer hearings we're going to have to have.
I am only suggesting that
And they'll say, go to the Board of Appeals, that's clearly a nursery item.
I am only suggesting that we exclude the things that we are not authorized to permit. We are authorized to permit Christmas trees and other holiday materials, so it's a question to the board, do we want to continue to include this?
Well, they've applied for them. I mean, you're asking us now to, to determine it?
It's in the application.
Determine that?
They removed it, though.
It is currently in the application.
Shouldn't we hear what the public says before we determine what we want to do?
When we've gotten through as far as we can get tonight, we're going to ask for public comment.
I understand that, but shouldn't we use public comment? In other words, if we're going to determine whether or not they should be allowed to sell Christmas trees, shouldn't the public be allowed first to say whether or not they should be allowed to sell Christmas trees? And so that we would then have public comment on which to make a decision.
But I thought the bylaw
Okay, two things, let me just answer that. First of all, absolutely, the only reason I'm bringing it up here is A, it's under I, and B, because in supplementary materials we received from the applicant, they took it out again, so I'm calling your attention to the fact that it was taken out, okay? I'm happy to hear from the public on it, I'm just calling your attention to it.
We're going to need the supplementary material to be, I, I mean, let's make sure that we, we're, we're proceeding with the White Book as our application and there's some supplementary material
That we received on April 4.
That we really need a list of supplementary material that
Tim's in the process of trying to incorporate it into the rest of this matrix. We received it already on April 4. The question is, I'm just calling your attention to it. Cheryl, you had something.
Well, it's, I didn't think it was a question of whether it's something we can allow or not. I thought that it's already allowed under the zoning.
It is allowed under the zoning.
All right, so then, it's really not a question of whether it's allowed or not. It's a question of whether that, it makes sense to keep it in this application or whether it should stay with the Board of Appeal under the special permit, right?
Or the Dover amendment, apparently.
And so it really is, you're saying that the applicant put it in and then they took it out in the supplemental?
Right, that's all I'm doing is calling your attention to that, yes.
So is the supplemental then to supersede the application?
No, it is additional information that came in that the board takes under advisement along with everything else.
Then do we ask for clarification from the applicant and what their intention is?
That would be a reasonable thing to do, yes.
Yes, we took it out under advisement from our farm attorney, saying that it should not be included here, just in case the special permit for the landscaping use is ever challenged or revoked or denied or rescinded, so that's why it's out.
And is it under your nursery permit at the moment?
It is, it's, yeah, it's under, it's a bylaw, yeah, that, the bylaw was after our nursery permit.
So there's not need to discuss it any further.
Well, except
There are, some people think that actually just saying it's under the bylaw and that's the end of the discussion may not be a thoroughly adequate analysis, some people.
Well, that, that's why I asked, was it actually in your permit? Whether or not it's allowed under the bylaw is another matter. Has it actually been incorporated into your permit from the ZDA?
Um, no, the, our initial permit that was granted in 1967, we needed a, a permit for because we didn't have the five acres. So subsequently, we've acquired over five acres and then farming was decreased to two acres. So in our opinion, in my farm attorney's opinion, the nursery permit that was originally issued in 1967 is really null and void because we are, we qualify for the two acres or more, which is has protection under the Dover amendment.
Completely null and void?
In my, in my attorney, in my farm attorney's opinion, yes.
This is not the farm attorney sitting at the, at the table.
Correct.
So
I'm sure I
Do you want us to respond to that?
Null and void is a term, is a legal term of art.
Okay.
Just a question, my client is not an attorney.
Or, right.
What, how they may be using, proper nomenclature may be superseded by changes in state law and local zoning to address what is allowable or not allowable on, as an agricultural use on a lot of a certain size. And I'll defer to
And if it's not superseded, then the permit would still be in force.
Correct.
Yeah.
So elements of that permit are clearly in force and questions which are superseded by changes in state law since 1969.
So on June 11th, our farm attorney is available to come to answer any of your questions.
I think that could be very useful. Anything else?
So I have, so, so I guess my question, the applicant is suggesting that they have removed their request for Christmas sales to be under business activity schedule. So, and Emily, you suggested we don't necessarily have to go that route.
I know, all I'm doing is I'm bringing it to the board's attention that we have the authority under the zoning to regulate that. The applicant initially put it in, has removed and has told you why. I'm just putting it out to the board.
So I guess my question is, do we have the authority to put it back in if the applicant has removed it?
I'm just saying, we need to discuss it.
Okay, I'm asking, I'm asking in part of discussion.
Do we have authority if they don't want it? I don't think so.
But what I'm wondering is, does it make sense for us to discuss, you know, the applicant wants it taken out, we can do that and that's fine, but does it make sense for us to reopen that or not? Because I can see implications where it might be better to have it within the special permit, is all I'm saying, is that it is regulated under a specific special permit.
It would be advisable if it was in the special permit, but if they don't want it, they don't want it.
Then that's all. I just wanted to bring it up, call your attention to it. I agree with Alex that I think it would be advisable to have it in the special permit, but I also recognize that we can't.
But of course, you know, the special permit would define it.
Yes.
And that, you know, currently, it's sort of undefined, which is, of course, something that someone would feel was better than a strictly defined use. So I understand the point, but I do think it would be advisable for them to, to take the, take their chances. And, and, you know, if we define the use in our permit, they still, if they have some overarching right under state law to do more, they'd still have that right.
They don't lose that right.
I think it might benefit us, this discussion, if we hear from the attorney that has expertise in the matter.
So who will be here on June 11?
Yeah, so maybe we could hold off on that, further discussion on it.
I just, I just want to weigh, I believe that, I'm not, I'm not convinced I'm comfortable with making any recommendations. I mean, we've, we've made a point to the, to the applicant and she has, they have their attorney and I think they should let us know whether or not they want it in the application and
That's fine.
That would be my preference.
That's fine, I'm just, as I said, calling it to your attention. All right, then that brings us, let's see, rest of the list of business activities, firewood sales, landscaping services, snow management.
I have a question.
Yes, Alex.
How late do you propose to go tonight?
9:00.
Because I would like to enter 10.
Let's finish this and then we'll go to public comment and then we will move on to our last hearing, because I don't think that's meant to take long. So any other questions on business activities? Any other concerns, anything you want to bring to the applicant's attention for a response?
Any, on what?
On I, list of business activities. We have firewood sales, landscaping services, and snow management services.
Are we going to discuss the firewood sales at any point?
I'm asking you now, what, oh, you mean as far as, what happens with it? Yeah, it's later on in this, there's a firewood plan. Hang on.
Can I just ask about the building commissioner memo under this, under the chart here?
Yes.
It seems to me that this is talking about uses relative to the nursery, which we talked about as really not being our purview. And then the second sentence about construction, I mean, that's a whole different licensing to go into building construction, so I don't see that it necessary for us to even comment on it because we're not talking about a building contractor site here, we're talking about a landscaping site.
Well, that's, yeah, that plays into what Emily's said quite often, that is, we only have the right to permit certain things, we don't have the right to permit any of that, so.
Right, so I'm just, just making the comment, that doesn't seem like we can do anything about the comment that's here from the commissioner, right?
Well, I think what we do is we, what we are looking to do with what we have in front of us now, I mean, and what's been in the matrix, is so far we've been permitting, we've been allowing things, we've been permitting, that's what we're allowed to do, is we're allowed to permit things, so we get to specify the materials, we get to specify the amounts. It's, I'm thinking, and I'm happy to be corrected on this, that if we don't specify it, it can't be done. It's, it's a positive specification rather than a negative.
So you can't put in negatives in the permit. We can't say you can't do this, you can't do that.
But if we say
Say you can do X, if you go beyond X, then you
Then you're not, we don't have that, so we can't, yeah, okay, so you go wrong.
That's my understanding, that's fine, okay.
Which is why I, yeah, I agree with what you said.
Anything else on this? On building uses, P4P is firewood, Alex, so we'll be going into that in more detail, that's the firewood plan itself, and I think the one right after the, and there's one for Christmas tree sales, so it'll come back up and that'll be a good opportunity to discuss it, and then there's the snow.
Getting back to business activities.
Yes.
If you grow a tree, that can be a nursery activity. If you grow a tree for sale in your landscaping business, then growing the tree can be a landscaping activity. If you add a load of mulch in to sell to customers, that can be a nursery activity. If you put it in the truck for the landscaping business, then that becomes a landscaping business. It isn't, you know, to say, oh, that's a nursery operation, when the nursery is basically using its, itself as a part of the landscaping business, which is what happens. To say that they're two distinct activities is just not, not the right way to approach this.
It's going to make a tricky special permit writing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Alex, is the concern about, with respect to that, that the use, those duplicative uses, that they have different hours that are approved?
Not duplicative.
But, well, let's say it's a cross use, it's a twine use.
Growing a tree, it can be, it can be a landscaping use or a nursery use, depending on what you do with the tree.
What if you did this? If you grew the tree under the nursery and you said the nursery sold it to the landscaping business?
I think that's what it is, in their, in their narrative, that's what they say.
Yeah.
So it's, it's, it is nursery use, but you're selling it.
Basically, what you're saying, the use of bobcats to load up the landscaping business until they get to the truck, it's nursery business, so we have no control over basically anything.
Yeah, see, I wouldn't agree with that, but you wanted to end at 10, so we're going to let this lie till next week and we're going to hear from the public. Do you guys want to step back?
Can I just give one thought?
Yes.
To recap, I thought tonight was a very insightful, we're moving in the right direction. I just would like to give the board some insight of the reality and ramifications of this process. I need the planning board to please listen to me. I will be accurate, clear, honest, and sincere. Does the town of Milton want Thayer Nursery to stay in business? The answer is an unequivocally yes. Five out of eight abudders endorse and support Thayer Nursery as it was in 2012. Six out of nine, if you include me, makes that even higher. The Hillside Street, Scottswood's neighborhood endorses and supports Thayer Nursery. Town of Milton endorses and supports Thayer Nursery and wants us to stay in business. Thayer Nursery is an asset to our community. For Thayer Nursery to stay in business, we, we need to be able to operate as we did in 2012. The data provided by Maggie and I in our permit application is accurate and honest. Please listen, there is no fat to be trimmed. If any of the products sold, nurseries provided, where ours needed to work are altered or changed by this board, we will go out of business as you know it today. If our current business fails due to the restrictions placed on this board, one of two things will happen. Option one will have us focusing on growing, nurturing, and maintaining more plant material with little or no town of Milton zoning restrictions. And as part of this new business model, we will introduce a composting and material processing facility that will create the need for more equipment, and this facility would also create more noise than what existed in 2012 and what levels currently exist today. The state of Massachusetts is putting a lot of pressure on us to open this type of facility because of the closure of landfills. We, the Ofields, have chosen not to go down this path in the past because we felt it was in the best interest of our neighbors not to do this. But if this board makes decisions that affect our ability to survive, our ability to survive, we will be forced into making this business transition. Option two, if our current slash previous business model fails, would be to sell our nine acres to the highest bidder for new development. We have been contacted and have been corresponding with developers seeking to develop the property into senior housing or other high-density options. So in summary, thank you for listening, and the information I just provided you with is accurate, honest, and sincere. Just as an FYI, the cost associated with implementing what Maggie and I have proposed in our application to coexist with our neighbors is $184,250. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a moment. So I'm going to ask the three of you guys to sit back, we're going to have public comment. I don't think I need to read the rules again, you all heard them once today. And then we're going to identify the things that we need for moving forward to the next, the next meeting, and we'll continue to the next meeting. I'll remind all people commenting that we want to hear comments on what was presented today, not on previous presentations, just please focus on the issues we've discussed today so that we can move forward. There will be plenty of time to discuss other issues later on. Thank you very much. Yes, you are recognized?
I'm Phil Joenning, 23 Parkwood Drive. There's one question I have, just in general, about snow plowing. Everything I know about snow plowing Everything I know about snow plowing indicates there would be sand, salt, et cetera, and I guess I would ask the board, as we go forward, to define where are those materials going to be stored? If they're going to be stored at another site like Driscoll, the machines have to be cleaned, how will they be cleaned, will they be cleaned on-site, et cetera? The other thing I wanted to do was read a letter that I wrote today to the board, does everybody have a copy?
I think there's a copy in our packet, is it specific to what we talked about tonight?
It, it's very specific to what Josh just said, is that tonight?
That was qualified tonight.
I would, I would like to comment on it. In addition to the requirements of the Milton zoning bylaw amendment passed during the special town meeting in May 2014, there are additional requirements for a special permit that are found in Section 9C1 of the Milton zoning bylaws. That provision requires all applicants for a special permit to show that the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of this bylaw. Moreover, Section 9 of the Massachusetts Zoning Act also provides that special permits may be issued only for uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance or bylaw, and shall be subject to general or specific provisions set forth therein. Therefore, under both the bylaws and the zoning act, a valid special permit requires the applicant to show that the intended uses are in harmony with the intent of the bylaw, and the special permit can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. These requirements have not been shown during the hearings. In order to determine whether a special permit can issue for the uses proposed by Thayer Nursery, the planning board must recognize the intent of the bylaws. That can be determined by reviewing Section 3A of the bylaws entitled Use Regulations for Residents AA, A, B, and C Districts. That section provides, one, no building or land shall be used for commercial purposes. In general, commerce is not permitted. Two, one exception is that on a parcel of five acres or less, agricultural use selling only produce raised on the premises is permitted. The restriction of selling only produce raised on the premises is a way to control the potential volume of commerce on the property. The intent of the bylaw is to keep this type of business in a residential district small. The bylaw goes on to say in B, accessory uses, that the sale of produce not raised on the premises, unless in the case of a commercial greenhouse maintained on any lot of less than five acres, established and doing a non-conforming business, a special permit as granted by the Board of Appeals is not an accessory use. Thayer Nursery is not a non-conforming business, and so selling of produce not raised on the premises is not permitted, even under a special permit. Three, accessory use on the same lot with an incident to any of the permitted uses cannot be detrimental to a residential neighborhood. The bylaw is here prohibiting the use of noisy equipment that causes diesel exhaust fumes to blanket the neighborhood. The bylaw does not envision a business that causes loud noises that wake the neighbors at 7:00 AM on a Saturday or Sunday, or any other day for that matter. It prohibits activity that disrupts the pastimes of the neighbors, like cookouts and pool parties because of dust smells and loud noises. Those types of things are detrimental to a residential neighborhood. Four, the bylaw permits a nursery to sell only during the Christmas season, cut trees, boughs, holly, and wreaths grown or fabricated elsewhere than on the premises. This section of the bylaw prohibits farmers' markets, artisans' markets, the sale of gift wear, et cetera. The only products that can be sold that were not raised or fabricated on the premises are Christmas trees, wreaths, boughs, and holly. The bylaw also states, there shall be no use of commercial vehicles for regular deliveries of goods or materials to or from the dwelling related to the home occupation. Though this particular section relates to a home occupation, it indicates that the bylaw does not intend for a business to make or to receive regular deliveries by truck in a Residence AA, A, B, or C district. The bylaw also states, the home occupation cannot create noise, odor, dust, vibration, fumes, or smoke discernible at any boundary of the lot on which the home occupation is situated. Again, this pertains to a home occupation, but it makes no difference to neighbors in a Residence AA or A district whether the disturbance comes from a commercial landscaping business or a home occupation. The important point here is that the boundary of the lot is critical, rather than the distance to a neighboring home. It is interesting to me that when Pam Lepore and I showed an alternate plan for the nursery, Emily Innis said, what about the neighbors? Though these are public hearings, and though those neighbors at Hillside and Forest could attend, only one neighbor made a comment. John Rowe, Pam Lepore, Chris Tevens, Tina Tevens, and I have brought up multiple issues that illustrate that a special permit cannot issue to Thayer Nursery without causing a substantial detriment to the public good. These remain unresolved, and in fact, have not even received the same consideration that the fictitious concerns of the absent neighbors have received. Why is that? The very fact that certain members of the Oldfield family have been forced to cut deals with neighbors on Harland, Street, and Parkwood Drive, not to object to its application on its face, evidences that the activities to be sanctioned by the special permit it seeks cannot be undertaken at Thayer Nursery site without causing substantial detriment to the public good. It also evidences that a special permit authorizing the same commercial ventures already banned by the Milton Zoning Board of Appeals and the Norfolk Superior Court is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaws. Consequently, the planning board is precluded from granting the request, the requested zoning relief in this instance, because Thayer Nursery can make no showing that it satisfies the special permit requirements set forth in the bylaws and the zoning act. Attached is an email sent by Thayer Nursery to friends and customers. The theme is familiar but wrong. The important consideration at these hearings is that the business activities sanctioned by the special permit must be in harmony with the intent of the bylaws, which expressly provide for the protection of residential neighborhoods. Thayer Nurseries clearly are not. Moreover, the bylaws and the zoning act do not take into consideration the health and well-being of the business seeking a special permit. Instead, their focus is correctly on whether a special permit is in the public good. To further that objective, the planning board's recognition of the neighbors' concerns is critical. Those abutters who have not been bought off by the Oldfields object to the constant loud noises, foul odors, dust, fumes, unnatural light, vibration, and flooding caused by Thayer Nursery. We also cannot agree to a multifaceted, abutting, commercial enterprise which starts its activities at 7:00 AM and continues until 6:00 PM, seven days per week, seven days per week. The special permit must be denied, not because there is an irrational dislike of this business or its owners, but because the uses and activities that it will sanction are incompatible with the special permit requirements of the bylaws and the zoning act.
Thank you very much.
So, I, I'm not finished. So, this is, this is a, a matter of law. It's not a matter of like, dislike, it's not a matter of that. It's a matter of law, and the law is clear. I've also attached a, the email that I mentioned.
We, we have that attachment, you don't need to read that, we'll, we'll consider it part of our-
One of the things that concerns me about it is that it says that, it, it indicates that they already believe that they have certain rights to do things that have not been granted by the board. So, they went out to the neighborhood and they said certain things that just, you know, are not true. And one of the most interesting things is that they talk about selling yard games, et cetera, which have been, they've, have a cease and desist order from, from the court, from Norfolk County Superior Court. And additionally, they are not part of this application process. There's, this, this board cannot grant them the right to sell yard games, for instance, it's, it's not, not permissible.
Excuse me, Emily, Madam Chair, there are a number of people with their hands raised in the audience, and we have six minutes left before we've declared we're going to close for tonight, can we move on?
We can't declare, we can't declare that we're closed for tonight at 10:00, because we still have another special permit. Mr. Johanning, if you could wrap up, I see about, as Cheryl says, about five or six hands behind you.
Yeah, the, the threat that is, is, you know, typical of where we go with these all the time, and I think, you know, what the board is obligated to do is concentrate on the law, and that's it.
Great.
Okay?
Very much. Okay, I see this gentleman in the front here, yes, you sir, with your hand up, just come forward.
Just, just a point of information.
You just, you have to identify yourself and speak into the mic, please.
My name is Dr. Martin Dunn, 50 Briarbrook Street, Milton. Just a point of information, I know the hour's late and you want to, but I've tried, tried to speak the last two meetings, one, I sat for three and a half hours, tonight I sat for four hours, and you, this man was up, up here, standing before you recognized him. What I would just request, I'm willing to come back to the next meeting, but can we continue on with the people who want to speak, rather than starting all over again? In other words, can it truly be continued, so that I, because I have about five or six minutes, and I don't want to take it now, because no one's going to listen to me, I mean, everyone wants to go, and I understand that, but could you just take off where, where we left off, or take up where we left off tonight, so that we don't have to go through the routine? And, and, you know, I've been very patient, but when someone else jumps up and then is recognized, I called Bill Clark on Tuesday, and I said that I wanted to speak, and could I be on the program to, to speak, because I wasn't allowed the last time, so that's my request, and no one wants to listen to me now, and-
Well, first of all, I apologize, I did not see you indicate last time that you wanted to speak, so if I missed you, I apologize for that, because we do not want to cut off anybody from speaking.
Right.
I will make a note that you'll be the first to be recognized next time. I don't know about the other members of the board, I would like to hear the members of the public, and I don't want anybody who's been sitting through such a long evening to not be heard, so.
I would like to continue.
I think that the comments are, are reference to what we're speaking about tonight.
Yeah.
I would like to hear them tonight.
Yeah, no, mine, mine are not.
Okay.
And, in fact, they're, in general, going back, I think this board knows that I've missed one meeting in over two, well over two years, so I've been at all meetings, I've been very patient, I've spoken twice, this would have been my third time, but, no, there, it's, it's thoughts that I want to, just synopsis of what's going on as you begin to go into making a, a final decision. So, specifically, it's not about parking, it's, it's not, but neither was Mr. Roosevelt, you know, an item tonight, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I, as I said, I've marked you to speak first at the next meeting, and the general, does anybody else wish to speak, and thank you very much, sir, and I apologize, does anybody else wish to speak to what we've discussed tonight in the board's discussion? Yes, ma'am. And then for anybody else, if you had planned to speak tonight and decided that you don't want to, please see me after the meeting and give me your names, and I will recognize you in order the next time, if you wish to come back. Please identify yourself and where you live.
I'm Carol Stocker, I live at 291 Hillside Street, I've lived across the street from Thayer Nursery for 35 years, which is longer than any of the abutters, and I have always enjoyed having them there, and I resent when people who don't agree with Mr. Johannes are called fictitious, or said to be bought off by the nursery, or said that they don't exist or don't speak, when in fact he's hogging the microphone while five other people who have been waiting patiently also want to speak. And I think there is a lot of support in the neighborhood for Thayer Nursery, which is in fact, trying to be relevant. The Christmas tree issue, they are the heart of the neighborhood, and the neighborhood is turning over, there's a lot of young families with little kids, and they love going to Thayer Nursery with their parents, it's like a little, you know, magic village, and, and I think that when you talk about what is detrimental to the neighborhood, you know, having a, a place that you can walk to to buy your Christmas tree is not detrimental to the neighborhood, and a place that's all decorated with pretty lights, and a place that hosts neighborhood functions, for instance, they're having a family barbecue that they're hosting next Thursday for the neighbors, and they've had Easter egg hunts, these are, this is a multi-generational family business with a lot of little kids, and those little kids, those little Oldfields are the same ages as the little kids whose parents are moving into this neighborhood as it turns over, and older people like me sell their houses, and this would be a tremendous loss to all those families. It's a, it's, it's a neighborhood center, and, and has become even more so since it's been taken over by Maggie and Josh, and they've started their young families. And I don't see any dust, and I don't see any fumes, and I don't hear noise, and I think that there are a couple of people who are, talk about irrational, just trying to drive this longtime family business out of business, and that no matter what you do, they will just try to pick them to death, and they cannot be satisfied.
Thank you.
But, and if you want to hear from more neighbors, we'll bring more neighbors in who are not these same couple of people the next time that there's a meeting.
Okay, thank you for speaking, sir, please come forward.
Oh, and also, I'm a former president of the Hillside Neighborhood Association.
Thank you. And again, we ask that people try and keep their comments to what we discuss as board members tonight on the mitigation and other requirements.
Robert Muzzi, 291 Hillside Street, also an abutter for 35 years. In general, I think the board has been reasonable in the amelioration that they've discussed in order to mitigate some of the effects of the, the nursery on the neighborhood, and I don't, in general, object to the impact they have, even though we live right where all the equipment comes down the street and around our corner there. I also want to point out that, as a professional historian, I spent probably all, almost all of last December researching about 500 deeds in the neighborhood. I looked through all U.S. Censuses from 1840 to 1940, and Hillside neighborhood, Scottswood, has always been an agricultural area. Virtually everyone who lived in the neighborhood up to the 1910s, when wealthy Bostonians began to make it a summer state area, were farmers, yeoman, as they were called, yeoman farmers, or they were tradesmen like a carpenter, or a bootmaker, or a shoemaker. So, the agricultural part of our history is the backbone of what Milton has always been, and, and the Scottswood neighborhood has always been essentially agricultural, and Thayer Nursery is the only remnant remaining of that, and there, what are there, four nurseries in Milton? That's it for all that's left of agriculture in Milton. So, I would urge you to support their application, and I believe that the amelioration that you have suggested is adequate.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who wishes to speak tonight? Please come forward.
I'm Donna Swanson, I'm at 303 Hillside Street, basically across the street from Thayer Nursery. We bought our house eight years ago, and love the fact that Thayer Nursery is there. We go there often, and our children have gone there, and it makes our part of Scottswood so unique. In terms of the parking and talking about parking, whenever you walk by, it's very neatly done, it's tastefully done, and it goes along with everything in the neighborhood, and to move their trucks to where the front part of the parking lot, I- And to move their trucks to where the front part of the parking lot, I think that would be just... It wouldn't be appropriate because it's... The way the old fields have set it up is beautiful landscaping and it's a real positive things for the neighborhood. So, wherever they're parking their vehicles now is perfect because it's not an ice storm.
Hey. Go on, ma'am.
I didn't laugh at you when you were up there. Well, anyway, so... And I would suggest that we maintain the parking where it is because it really works for most of the neighbors. And that's all.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to speak tonight? All right, in that case, we are going to continue this public hearing to...
Just a quick question.
Very quick.
Understood. But is there an opportunity for us to dedicate a meeting to this? Because we've gotten through two sections tonight. This applicant... This application could just drag on forever. Is there a meeting after next meeting that we can bump this to to just give it a night?
A whole night by itself.
I mean, honestly, we need to... In my opinion, we need to move this along. We're getting through two sections a week.
Yeah, I don't have an objection to moving it on. So, next time, we already know we've got Woodmere, not Wemere. And we'll probably have 333 Brush Hill. We could move this to June 25th and give it a meeting all its own, but that would be the only opportunity to do that.
What about the week after next time?
Have a second meeting or an earlier meeting in June? We could do that, June 8th.
Kicking it over from the 11th is a little unfair.
I agree. No, I agree with that.
And since we've continued one thing to the 11th, let's do it on the 18th.
I'm fine with that.
I don't have... Let me just check my calendar. I think it should be okay.
Shouldn't we move out earlier on the 11th?
Yes. I may.
Well, we've got... We can... We've got plenty to do on the 11th.
Yes, I could do the 18th.
I have a conflict potentially on the 18th. It will just depend on whether another public hearing gets kicked, so.
We need to do it to date certain. Does anybody have a problem with the 17th?
What about the Wednesday?
The 17th?
The 17th.
Okay.
Emily, can I also make a request? As I think you started to say, is that the people that we... Who wish to speak, who have not spoken to us, whether it's for what's discussed that night or not, get the first opportunity to speak?
I was gonna... Don't mean to interrupt, but I was...
Hit the head.
I'm taking the words out of my mouth that we should get people's names, whether they email them to Tim or whatever, people who haven't had the opportunity to speak, get the opportunity to speak.
Okay.
And then I would like to respectfully request that people sitting in the audience not chuckle or otherwise comment while people are at the microphone. I know some people have said to me when I was running for this office that it's intimidating to come up and make comments. I think it's particularly intimidating if people are laughing behind the back when they're sitting there.
Yeah, and I heard that several times through this meeting from many different people, so I agree. Don't do it again. So, Dr. Don will be the first person up next time. I have a potential conflict on the 17th and I won't know for probably until that week whether or not it's there.
What about the 16th?
I've got... It's a potential for 15th, 16th, and 17th. I have to hold them all. And I won't know for at least another week and a half whether or not it's there. The 10th?
Do you want to round?
I may be free on the 10th. I am free on the 10th. I could do it.
I can't do the 10th. But you have to pick who you can do.
I can't do the 9th, but I could do the 8th. Or I could also do the 19th if you want to do a Friday.
Yeah, I'll do a Friday. I'm available to 8th.
Well, it's not...
No, Friday, you won't get the public. 8th I can do are, you know... We can schedule it for the 18th and I'll just, you know, I may...
Have you missed... You haven't missed one already?
I haven't missed one on there yet.
Okay.
As long as we're not going to vote that night, I could watch it.
I can pretty much guarantee we won't be voting that night. All right, the 18th then?
18th then.
You guys are good with the 18th?
The 18th.
What about the 8th? You decide now.
I'm okay with the 8th.
What about everyone else on the 8th?
I don't know about the 8th. But let's do it the 18th.
Okay, 18th. So, we're going to continue this?
We want that drainage plan. We want the drainage plan.
Yes.
You will have it.
In fact, I would say everything that has come up to date, we want the response to that. And do you have a copy of the matrix that Tim's been working on?
Yes.
Okay. So, anything you can anticipate would also be helpful. So, all right, so the 18th, we will do it at?
6:45.
That means we don't have a 7:00 start. I think 7:00.
If we... No, I'm suggesting we start the hearing at 6:45 and we start at 6:30.
Are we going to all be able to make it by then?
It's really challenging for me to get here at 6:30.
I have to... I actually have to leave work.
I mean, doing it at 7:00 is fine as long as we stop at 10:00.
Yes.
And I don't, you know, I... It seems to me that going past 10:00 is just...
I agree, it is not one of my favorites, so...
Well, there's no need for it.
Tonight there was, but I agree, not other nights.
It's not productive.
Okay, so 18th, start at 7:00, guaranteed to be finished by 10:00. We're just cutting the clock at that, yes.
Emily, just to that comment, you know, some of these more complicated projects and public hearings, maybe we shouldn't have more than one a night for those because it feels like it's rushed.
Well, these were scheduled 15 minutes apart.
Yeah.
We have had a perfect...
It was clear that it wasn't going to happen.
Right. We have had a perfect storm of applications come through recently. Unfortunately, we may have more coming up, so we will do our best. All right, 18th, 7:00, 333 Brush Hill Road. Site plan approval, special here... Public hearing. Is our person here?
Is that the same?
That was the one who didn't show last time.
Back with me.
So, people, if you could move out as quickly and as quietly as possible, we have another public hearing. Come on out.
And I didn't bring my drawings.
Hello. Hello.
Welcome. And when you sit down, please introduce yourself and speak into the mic.
We'll do that.
I understand you had some traffic problems last time.
Well, I wasn't the one. I was in another meeting.
Okay.
But the person who's coming here did have some horrendous traffic issues getting here. For the record, my name is Frederick Geisel. I'm a professional civil engineer representing Civil Environmental Consultants tonight. And I want to be very brief. Ken Buford from Civil Environmental Consultants apologizes that he couldn't be here tonight because he had a wake to go to. Given the late hour, he could have made it. But in any event, we just received today some comments from town engineer, which we have tried to address at least briefly. And I've actually bought six sets of revised plans so that we could give them back to the town engineer, to you. And we also received information for a peer review consultant, which I believe that Ken Buford called to the client and responded positively, but that needs to be arranged, done and carried on and then revisions, whatever, responding to that. So, that's in the works. While I'm suggesting right now that I can present some stuff to you if you're willing or just give you the plans.
Shouldn't you give them to the town engineer and have him look at them?
Well, that's... That would be an idea. That's why I have the plans, some plans here.
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay. I don't want to take any more of your time and I'm not sure you're willing, you're interested in looking at plans.
My understanding is that... I spoke with Ken this afternoon.
Right.
And he said that he has had a chance to talk to John Thompson and a lot of... A certain number of issues in this memo have been addressed in these plans, so...
I just have a question too.
It might be worth looking at them because they have addressed things that the town engineer has.
The town engineer has seen these revised ones?
No, no. They were just...
He's seen the ones that came before.
I just make a brief comment. I mean, since it was his comments that initiated these revisions, he should be the first to review them.
I think everyone would agree with that.
I'm fine with that. I'm just curious whether you also have the additional information that we requested at the last hearing that in that set.
The amount of fill?
The amount of fill and the site sections.
Site sections.
We... They do have a plan in here showing site sections. I can show them to you if you want to see them, but they're...
I'm happy to take a copy with me.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
We would all like those, yes.
And I don't think the quantity of fill has been totally calculated. We can calculate that number. I did note that. I didn't get that comment from initially. I do the sections and a planet profile. We made a revision to the... Where the sewer line goes and we showed the length of it along the roadway, but we need to extend that. And we didn't really practically have the time to do that today. It extends off the roadway through an easement where it would discharge to the gravity sewer line rather than the other way we had proposed to put it, which was going to a pumping station, which would then add...
Which again were comments from the town engineer that initiated that.
Yeah, exactly. We addressed that, right, exactly. So, we've just made those changes, but we haven't continued the profile to show how it would connect and everything else. So, that's... We're, you know...
But you're going to do that.
We're going to do that, right.
And the town engineer is going to look at it.
He's going to look at it, right. We hadn't had a chance to do everything. We tried to get most stuff together. So, at least you say, okay, you've got the idea. We're following his comments.
So, here's my first question for you, which is with the other things that you need to do, would you be prepared to come back on June 11th or would you prefer June 25th to give you sufficient time?
I think with a peer review consultant, having to look at things and get comments and have her have a chance to... Lisa Eggleston?
Yeah.
Eggleston Environmental, so I think two weeks is not going to be rushing it, you know. I mean, we get some comments, but get them back and then have a chance of, yes, we reviewed this and you've addressed our issues and so that I... My thoughts were to make it June 25th.
Okay. So, I think that's reasonable and we'll put you on first thing on June 25th. So, to reward you for your patience tonight, so we'll do 7:00 at June 25th.
I made sure I got here on time early, so I was here at 7:00.
The fact that you're smiling is amazing.
We appreciate that.
I enjoyed the presentation and the discussions.
A little bit of life that you've got here.
So, do we want an explanation now? Do we want to wait and let this gentleman go home?
I think that we want to wait to the 25th and I think that we should discuss the master plan on the 11th.
Okay, so let me just... Before we get there, we're going to continue you to the 25th at 7:00 P.M.
Okay.
Excuse me one second, Emily. Are we taking drawings with us?
If we would like to take a drawing with you, by all means. So, I think you...
Phil has taken them.
Seven copies over there?
I have six.
Six, okay.
Okay. We can get other ones in, particularly if you want to send to the consultant, like we could send them directly or would rather be...
Well, I think we'll be fine with these because you're going to have the engineer review them anyway. So, we don't want you to do multiple copies, just have them changed.
You're also missing the two pages that you already have, which are the last two pages.
Okay.
There's an 8 and a 9. One of them's a landscape plan and I don't know what the other...
Oh, I think it was the architectural?
Yeah, architectural details.
Right, right. Which you already had, but they didn't change.
Right. So...
So, don't throw away our pass.
Oh, yeah, so on the architectural, we had also requested that the accurate grade and where the garage... There's a garage that's below that's not shown in the elevations, right?
You can... You have what we want.
Yeah.
You've got his name and email. Okay, we're going to send you an email tomorrow.
Okay.
Not tomorrow, Monday.
Not tomorrow, Monday.
Just a real brief, if... When you're virtually done sometime before the 25th, maybe we could get an electronic copy sent.
Yeah.
Right, that's one thing. Would you like to have reduced size?
Yeah, that's fantastic.
And we could PDF and then send you reduced size plans so you physically have an also electronic copy of everything.
You're going to have full-size plans also.
Oh, yes, yes, right.
Every format that we're entitled to.
Every format I could think of, okay. It's whatever.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
We'll see you on the 25th.
Okay.
And we appreciate your patience.
I'm sure we'll be...
I'll shoot you or Ken an email on Monday and just sort of...
Let me give you my card with my personal email so that... Make sure Ken forwards things, but sometimes I don't always get everything.
And that's me.
It's best to...
So, while they're exchanging cards, everyone, we have one last item on the agenda, which is the master plan. Alex has some changes he would like to propose. Alex, do you have copies of those with you tonight?
I do.
That you can hand out for our review?
I do.
And then I suggest we take it up at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, we have made... As you know, Tim did a yeoman's job of making a number of corrections typographical and otherwise. And we... He addressed some of Alex's questions in there where they were relatively easy to do. Alex, have you identified which ones he's already addressed?
I have. I've made little asterisks.
Okay, great.
I took Tim's letter and I asterisked the things that had not been addressed.
Not addressed.
And I say... I identify what the asterisk means.
Means, right.
Means, right at the beginning. And my view is, just quickly, I think that if you look at this stuff, we really shouldn't have to have a big discussion about it because most of this stuff is stuff that can be done and we have a master technician who can do it. And, you know, it's sort of like it says, "Complete the housing production plan." I mean, that just is not good. Keep it up to date.
Easy to do.
Easy to do, but it doesn't... It doesn't... When you read it, you don't say, "What are these stupid people?" It was done months ago. Native Americans just put in before the Puritans landed that there were some Native Americans around. It just isn't friendly to say the Puritans came and...
Suddenly, everything appeared.
So, it all started?
That's where it all started. Because it's not... But, you know, most of this stuff, there are a few things that you won't agree with, but you won't.
I might. You never know. I could be surprisingly agreeable at times.
All right, in any event, in any event, if... I'm happy to talk to someone if the master plan committee designates someone that should talk to me.
I think...
I'm happy to do it just to indicate what it might take.
I think the master plan committee is done and it's just going to be a board discussion at this point. They had their last meeting.
All right. Well, if a couple of...
So, it's back to here, yes.
If a board member wants to discuss it with me, that's fine.
Perfect.
Because of doing it at a meeting, there are 130 items and maybe 30 have been addressed, so that leaves 100. We don't want to do that.
So, have a look at it and we'll bring it up for discussion again on June 11th.
Unless someone contacts me and then we can...
Well, we'll still discuss. We're going to bring the master plan up for discussion on June 11th, yes.
Right, but I mean, if someone were to contact me and we could discuss it, we probably could get through it pretty quick.
I will contact Alex. We can even get it through really quick. So, before we leave, because I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn in approximately 10 seconds, we will... We being the planning department and me will work on a better schedule so we get out well before 10:00 on nights. And I apologize for the length of this meeting and I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All does in favor?
Right.